I'm going to bring this meeting of the Longdale City Council to order. Madam City Clerk, please conduct the roll.
Okay, good evening. Mayor Protem Kearney.
Here.
Councilmember Cuevas.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez.
Present.
Councilmember Talavera. Mayor Pauline Miles.
Here.
Currently, all members are present except for Councilmember Talavera.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to ask Mayor Protem Kearney to lead us in a pledge of allegiance, followed by Pastor George Magalini from Hope Chapel Four Squares Church.
Okay, gentlemen, remove your hats. May I use your very heart? We pay you love and peace. I believe in you, alive in the United States of America. I do recall that you were in the United Nations, and I know that you're a symbol of your dignity and essence. May the name be standing.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protem, council staff, everyone. Well, I have a poem and a short prayer tonight. The poem, that's right, the poem is called "A Brand New Day." It's a brand-new day to breathe and live, to enjoy the blessings he freely gives. Basking in the grace he bestows upon me with life abundant that's truly free. All because of Jesus, the Holy One, the awaited Messiah, the Father's Son. Yesterday is gone with all its sorrow. I have faith for today and hope for tomorrow. A brand-new day of victory divine. I forget the past, I leave it behind, for today is new, I boldly say. It's a hopeful moment, a brand-new day. Let's pray. Father God, we do acknowledge your presence. We thank you for the new things that you're doing in our lives and the new things that you're doing in this city, the heart of the South Bay. We pray that you would continue to bless this city, continue to protect it, Lord. We commit every citizen to you, Lord, every child, youth, adult, and especially our seniors. Pray that you would protect them, provide for them, give them good health and strength. We also thank you for our first responders. We thank you for our awesome Sheriff's Department and Fire Department and medical staff, everyone who serves, Lord. We pray that you would protect them and help them as they protect and help us. We thank you for everyone here tonight, Lord God, that has been called by you. We thank you for all your leaders here. Pray that you would give them wisdom from above to make decisions that are in line with your good principles. I personally pray this in Jesus's name. Amen?
Amen. Okay, let's have our public safety report. Let's hear from our Captain Palomino.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, esteemed members of the City Council and members of the community. I'm Nicole Palomino, the captain of South Los Angeles Station, and I will be presenting the public safety report for April 7th through April 21st. And I will begin by discussing some of our notable arrests and investigations. And so, to begin, on April 9th, at approximately 5:00 PM, Deputy Valiente contacted a male adult suspect on 169th Street and Prairie Avenue. The male was walking away from an abandoned house on the corner of the street. Deputy Valiente quickly determined the suspect was on active probation for weapons. During their conversation, the suspect admitted to possessing narcotics paraphernalia. Deputy Valiente searched the suspect's backpack and recovered a narcotics pipe, a plastic baggie containing 25 fentanyl pills, and a hand grenade. Longdale and South Los Angeles Station deputies subsequently evacuated the area, and detectives from our arson explosives detail responded to the location. Once on scene, the detectives rendered the hand grenade safe. The suspect was ultimately arrested for possession of an illegal explosive device, possession of a controlled substance for sales, fentanyl, and possession of drug paraphernalia. And then, on April 18th, at 6:30 AM, deputies responded to Manhattan Beach Boulevard and Mansell Avenue regarding a fatal traffic collision call for service. A preliminary investigation revealed that the driver of a commercial truck backed up along the north curb of Manhattan Beach Boulevard and accidentally struck a pedestrian worker and a power pole. The pedestrian was pronounced deceased by emergency medical personnel. The driver did remain on scene and was cooperative with investigators. The cause of the collision is still under investigation. Southern California Edison responded, completed necessary repairs, and restored power to the area. And then, I would also like to update the community on the effectiveness of the automated license plate recognition cameras that were approved by the City Council and installed throughout the city of Longdale. The cameras have been extremely valuable in solving criminal cases, apprehending wanted persons, and recovering stolen property. Detectives often get cases in which a vehicle was used in the commission of a crime, and the victim or witness could only recall the make, model, or color of the vehicle. Detectives input limited information into the camera system database, which assists them in identifying the vehicle and the perpetrators involved in the crime. So, in addition, when license plates are scanned by the camera system, it immediately notifies field deputies if the vehicle is reported stolen or wanted in connection with the crime. The system will also indicate if the vehicle is associated with missing or wanted persons. And then, regarding our traffic-related incidents, Motorcycle Traffic Enforcement Deputy Morales issued 34 citations during the reporting period for various vehicle code violations such as failure to stop at a stop sign, failure to stop at a red traffic light, and speeding. And then, lastly, our next Neighborhood Watch meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, May 21st, at 6:00 PM at the Harold Hoffman Community Center located at 14700 Bearden Avenue. Everyone from the community is invited and encouraged to attend. And I just want to remind everyone, this is a fantastic opportunity for Longdale residents to gather and discuss important public safety issues with law enforcement and one another. And I hope to see you all there. This concludes my report, and I would be happy to answer any questions the council might have.
Are there any questions at the captain's report? Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to Item D, presentations by the South Bay Council of Governments on the Housing Focus Case Management Program in LA County Measure A. Yes, sir.
Great, thank you, Honorable Mayor and fellow City Council members. Thanks for having me. My name is Ronson Chu, Senior Project Manager for Homeless Services for the South Bay State Council of Governments. Glad to be here today to talk about a program that we've started to cover the northeastern part of the South Bay, which includes Longdale. Great. So, I want to skip this for a second, but go to here. We were doing an analysis of case management coverage throughout the South Bay. And in our analysis, some of the highlighted areas that we, when we did this analysis, was about two, three years ago, we noticed there were gaps in services. And one of the gaps was Longdale. And so, we had a conversation with Supervisor Holly Mitchell, who's representative, and is here today, to discuss how we can fill these gaps. And with some of her funding, as well as the COGS funding, we've hired six case managers to cover these gaps. And some of the case managers, one of the case managers is here today, as well as a supervisor for the St. Margaret Center, who we've contracted to help cover the gaps. But we wanted to make sure that all of our constituents were covered, including folks from Longdale. So, this was a great partnership that we've done with Supervisor Mitchell's office. In fact, Ara, she's actually helped a family here in Longdale not too long ago whose house burned down and was effectively homeless. And so, without the case management help, we wouldn't have been able to help this family. But fortunately, through this program, we were able to help that family and much more. I brought Jonathan Said from St. Margaret Center here, and also Marlon Pompeo, who is the case manager, to kind of talk about what Housing Focus Case Management is, and maybe how it differentiates, it's different from, say, the outreach services at LASSA. Jonathan?
I am Jonathan Said from St. Margaret Center, Catholic Charities of Los Angeles. And I think one of the foremost ways that our caseworkers work a little bit differently than outreach caseworkers at some of the more traditional outreach outfits from teams like LASSA is that they can run the gamut of case management, everything from street outreach to housing navigation, to permanent housing retention, and even prevention work, preventing people from becoming homeless. And so, because of their knowledge and their ability to navigate these very complex systems that are funded by various partners, they can tap into almost each aspect of addressing homelessness, whether it's from the upstream or downstream end. And that's sort of the way all homeless casework has been, and I think arguably should be. And because of the division of labor and the amount of funding that we see across the county, you know, the natural thing is to want to, you know, if you're working with someone in outreach, you're going to do it in outreach setting, you're going to hand them off to someone who's going to focus on housing, and then you're going to hand them off to someone else who's going to be doing retention work and trying to provide the supportive services to keep people housed. And our caseworkers, they build this relationship from outreach, and they keep that relationship at every level. And so, we've got dedicated caseworkers like Marlen, who know the system and the different funding sources, so they can only not make a referral, but they can also stay with that client, just like a family here in Longdale that we helped. Right now, our team of two caseworkers are going out to the northern area of this region, including Longdale. And they outreach about 100 individuals, and 10% of those folks are from Longdale. And so, we worked with providers here, as well as broadly in the region, to kind of coordinate services and to get folks connected. So, happy to answer any other questions.
Great, thanks, Jonathan. And to contact for these services, the contact information is up there. You can also email Madeline, who is also another case manager. Her email address is up there. But if there's any cases, definitely contact St. Margaret Center. You can also contact myself, and I have my business cards here as well. One of the things I want to also mention is kind of the schedule. So, SMC is St. Margaret Center, WLCAC is Wild Sleeper Community Action Coalition. They're the other contractor that we have, and they have four case managers. But this is kind of how the schedule breaks down. And we have Tuesdays as our dedicated day for Longdale, Alondra Park area. But, you know, the teams are pretty flexible, too, so we can help, you know, if there is a need anywhere else. Some of the cases, I won't read this slide, but just to give you another example of how we've helped, you know, I frequently get calls from Michael Reyes, who's in the know about what's going on in the community. And, you know, there's this one family he alerted me to that were living in their cars. I won't get into too much information about them to protect their privacy, but both of the parents were schoolteachers, one in Longdale and another in Hawthorne. And both their kids were students of Longdale. And so, what we're seeing right now on the streets, unfortunately, is a lot of families. Oh, and just a little backstory, that when the pandemic hit, it hit a lot of essential workers hard. And teachers were one group that got hit hard. And so, this family got caught up in the COVID pandemic and weren't able to recover as some other families might have been able to. And so, that was their homeless story. But yeah, we're seeing a lot of families where the rents, including Longdale's, have gone up so much in the past several years. Our housing prices have gone up, and these families just can't keep up, especially seniors who are outliving their social security allotment. You know, the average social security for some of our seniors is $1,500 a month, but rents for like a one-bedroom in our area are getting close to $2,000 a month. So, there's this gap in income and what is needed to pay for rent. So, that's what we're seeing. But I mean, that's it for our presentation. I'm open to any questions, but I just want to make you all aware of this valuable resources that we're providing here in Longdale.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Oh.
No, no questions. I just want to say thank you, Ronson. Ronson is a wealth of information with regards to this subject matter topic. And I hope you'll be able to also maybe also sit in on one of our subcommittee meetings with Councilmember Cuevas and I, and we kind of go over game plan or what we're working on. So, we'll let you know about that, too.
Yeah, we'd love to. And then, also, I just want to mention, this is also in our packet, which are some other services the COGS provide to our constituents, including client aid. We do pay for things like security deposits, transportation expenses. We call it just-in-time funding to get people off the streets, motel stays, things like that. So, that's also available to Longdale constituents as well. Thanks.
Yes, speaking of that, hold on, please. Speaking of that, I see you have homeless court. What can you tell me about the homeless court? This is a new court, right?
Yeah, the homeless court, well, the homeless court's been around about, so there's different variations of homeless courts.
Yeah.
There is actually a such a thing called LA County Homeless Court. And what that is, is a ticket clinic, basically, for anything that's like, anything above a parking ticket, but below a, say, felony crime, right? So, like, it could be jaywalking ticket or no loitering ticket. And so, that court addresses that, and that's available to Longdale residents. This homeless court that we're kind of helping is the South Bay Homeless Court, and it's only limited, it's limited to Hermosa Beach and Redondo Beach for those encounters in those areas. But they, yeah, it's a court that provides opportunity for people who have backgrounds, right? If you have a background, you're applying for a job, you know, that background check, if it pops up a warrant or something, that'll prevent you from getting a job. And what we want first and foremost is for people to be self-sufficient, right? To have jobs, and they can afford housing. With that background, you can, you know, a speeding ticket, people don't know this, but you can't pay your speeding ticket. That could cause bench warrant, and that shows up in the background check. So, something like a speeding ticket, a loitering ticket, that can prevent someone from getting a job. And so, we want to prevent that. So, that's what the homeless court there is to do.
Now, how does a city, I noticed Hermosa Beach and Redondo Beach are the only two cities that's participating. Now, how does a city get involved with the homeless court?
Yeah, so like, if the city of Longdale is interested, I know the city of Manhattan Beach, for example, has been interested for years to be involved in the Redondo Beach Homeless Court. However, they, with the prior district attorney, they didn't allow, he didn't allow for Manhattan Beach to join the Redondo Beach Homeless Court. I think maybe with the new district attorney, that might be different now. So, there is an opportunity maybe to have a discussion in Redondo Beach to see if other cities are interested in joining. There is also other court, Long Beach Household has their own flavor of a homeless court, but there's also other cities that are doing it, too. I think there might be even interest from the DA, the new district attorney, to expand this more broadly, so.
Okay. Yeah, one question. Have you reached out to the South Bay Web yet in partnership with them?
Yeah, yeah. So, one of our programs is, that's a great question, you know, because jobs and employment are huge priorities for us. But one of our programs at the very bottom is called Share Collaborative Housing. And this is what we call, a program we call Share Housing to Employment. And so, we have group homes all throughout the South Bay. There is about, there are about four bedrooms large, and we put about eight people in them. And the idea is through these group home environments, they have a peer support specialist to help them. You know, some folks are kind of on their way to being sobered up. They have, dealing with very minor mental health issues. And they have these peer support specialists that help them get jobs. And one of the things they do is they connect with the South Bay Web, which is a very, very, very great resource. You know, they have, you know, whenever they're building one of these stadiums, all the jobs come to the South Bay Web. And so, they're a great employer for our area.
All right, thank you. Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Now, we're on oral communications. Oral communications, we have the opportunity to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda. If you'd like to speak to this body on items that are not on the agenda, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, if you will come to the podium, if you will start with your name first. In about two and a half minutes, the amber light on the screen will come on to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. Now, you don't have to wait to hear your name. Yes, sir?
Wonderful. Honorable Mayor, City Council, City Manager, and staff. I am Ray Holler, homeowner in southwest Longdale. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Now, I wanted to speak to what our distinguished guest from the COG, Ronson Chu was just talking about, that's on the agenda, but you didn't call for somebody, I don't think, didn't hear you call. So, can I talk about that, or are you going to kick me aside?
Oh, which item?
What Ronson Chu was just talking about, the homeless, outreach, and so on.
Yeah, you can mention it.
Okay, so I had a situation a couple of months ago where I observed a woman in North Redondo who I thought really needed help. The thing is, it didn't look like she was injured really, or really like in serious 911 phone call kind of problem. But when I got home, you know, I wanted to do something. I wanted to call somebody, say, hey, I think there's a woman there who needs some help, and maybe with a place to go or whatever. And of course, it was like 4:30 on a Friday afternoon when, like, you know, everybody's rolling up the sidewalks. And so, I started, I went on the Redondo Beach website, tried to find somebody. I called somebody, and they said, yeah, we might have room for them in Lancaster. And so, the point of this is that I don't know who to call. And I used up like one of my, like, you know, special phone numbers to call my contact at Supervisor Holly Mitchell's office. And like, and she called back right away. Remember, this is Friday afternoon. And I'm trying to get somebody to do, to just get a look at her who knows something about how to handle people like that, like now, not like next week. And I kind of got frustrated, as you can tell, right away. And she made a suggestion for somebody to call, and I think I called them, and they wanted any help. And eventually, I was so frustrated, I just gave, I just called the Redondo Beach Police. And it turned out, apparently, they're the right people to call. And the reason why I bring this up is because, Ronson, we need some help. And you gave me, gave a phone number there. But like, it seems like every city has their own, like, different process for who to call or for what kind of thing. And I don't know where to get them, and it's very frustrating when you want to help somebody when you can't find somebody to help, because you know there is, there are people like Ronson and his guest there who are there to help people like that. I think that's why they're here. And so, I think there needs to be better communication so that when you see somebody with a problem, like, there's a woman over who tends to hang out on Artesia and Hawthorne Boulevard on the Redondo side there, and I see her, and I've seen her, like, sleeping next to the street or something. And like, I go about my business. By the time I get home, I forget, like, oh, I forgot to call about that lady. And then, there was a guy under tolerance of Artesia Boulevard underneath the freeway, 405 freeway, and I kept forgetting to call. And I finally called, and he was like living underneath a piece of cardboard. And I called, and it eventually took a time, but I think I had to like log into a website and make a report and that kind of stuff, and that doesn't work either. So, I mean, help us, please. He's a good man, really. I know him from the COG, so thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hello, I'm Ryan, and I'd like to introduce myself to you. I've lived in Longdale for the past few years, and I ride a bicycle as my main form of transportation. And I've been watching these meetings online for a while. And towards the end of last year, I saw someone speak up about bicycle infrastructure. And I was directed to the South Bay City Councils of Government, which then I found that they had a local transit network plan, which is great. And I would love you guys to endorse that and support that. It looks like it's going to put some infrastructure around the schools to improve safety, and I agree with that. And then, I just found out about this other thing that the South Bay Bicycle Coalition is doing. It's an active development. It's called the Active Transport Corridor along Redondo Beach Boulevard. And one of the things about Longdale is that there's almost no bicycle infrastructure. And there is actually one, there is one bike lane along Redondo Beach Boulevard. And this active transit corridor is going to hopefully improve that. It runs from Alondra Park to the Galleria. And on page 26 of the printout, there's printouts back there. You can see an illustration of what it currently looks like. And it's, looks like it's going to stay that way, but they do say they're going to improve the section where there's an on-ramp to the 405 freeway. And I strongly agree with that, too. I just rode there right before this meeting. There is no sign, there's no signal. It's just cars turning onto the freeway, and I think that could definitely be improved because it is intimidating to ride there. And in general... And in general, I would just encourage the council to think more about bikes. There's a lack of infrastructure in the city at the moment, so if there's any opportunity to endorse an infrastructure plan, please do it. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi there. My name's Andrew Blackney, I'm resident of Longdale. So I'm actually also your South Bay Bicycle Coalition representative. And I'd like to say hi, and also say, would you guys like to engage with us on the Metro's Active Transit project on Redondo Beach Boulevard? You guys have arguably the hardest section, because it is a section that passes both the on-ramp and the off-ramp for the 405. It's a very critical part of this. This is $6.6 million in funding, and there's not been much reach out from the city, specifically to the South Bay COG, or to South Bay Bicycle Coalition, which is trying to do the public engagement outreach for this. I'd love to talk with you guys about this and see what we can do to make it a little bit safer for people on bikes, or for pedestrians. The main reason for this corridor is to get students from El Camino College over there, and be able to get them down to the transit hub, the Redondo Beach Transit Hub there. And so students being people that are very, that tend to be a little bit more impoverished, because they're taking time to focus on developing their career, and that takes away from their ability to earn money. And it would be a lot easier for them if they had a method to get to and from their house that was not having to pay for a car, which they have to pay for the gas, they then have to pay for the insurance, and all of these things. And then on top of that, it creates further traffic in the city, further parking problems in the city. If they, they're likely to live in the area there, they're likely to spend a lot of time at school. So it makes perfect sense to say, hey, let's do something to make it easier for them and to alleviate traffic in our city as well. So I'd like to reach out to you guys about that, like to engage with you guys, and talk to you more about that. On a side note, not for my advocacy there, and if I can't talk about this, then please let me know in public comment. But in the closed session, you guys have public, you guys have comments from one of the people that is facing code violations. And if what they're alleging there is truly, is true, it is very astonishing to me, and I hope you guys would do something about that. I hope you've read that comment, and I hope that you take this, take it serious, what they're saying there, and take into account, and hopefully can try and improve some of that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and council members. My name is Channel Weber. I'm a Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration. The purpose for me being here is, pretty much everyone understands the role the FEMA plays in disasters, but they don't really understand SBA. And so I'm hoping, we're trying to hit all 88 cities here within Los Angeles County, and share just a little bit more information about who we are. So you may have heard of normal SBA, which handles things like 504, 7A, microloans, things like that. My office is actually called the Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience, and that essentially means I go from natural or man-made disaster to disaster to disaster. So what that kind of looks like is, here in California, I can tell you, before the wildfires broke out, we were actually on 12 different declarations. So think anything from Highway 1, Big Sur being closed, to the airport fire that was in Riverside County, things of that nature. But essentially, we are able to be deployed when a lot of other government agencies are not. And so kind of, by the numbers, what that looks like is, I can tell you, in Los Angeles County alone, so far, we've approved right at $2.55 billion in assistance. And of that, $2.25 billion, so almost 90%, has been to homeowners and renters. So just because our name says small business, actually, the majority of our assistance is for the individual. Kind of what that looks like, though, is we're able to offer homeowners and renters. So for a homeowner, we can offer long-term loans, they go all the way out to 30 years in term, and can do up to $500,000 for physical property damage. So think anything from, whether you just lost singles on your roof, to complete structure damage, you know, complete loss of your home, and can do an additional $100,000 for personal property. So that can cover anything from your vehicle, to the clothes on your back, you know, daily necessities, you need to live life. And again, could go all the way out to 30 years, and the interest rates on those start as low as 2.563%. So again, you probably are not going to find an approval or an interest rate that's going to be lower than that. Since we're federally, federal entity, we're able to offer that, because at the end of the day, it's your and my tax dollars. On the business side, though, we're able to offer, again, physical loans, or for physical damages that can go all the way out to 30 years, up to $2 million for anything from your inventory to the building itself. And then an additional, up to $2 million for economic entry. And that can cover anything, you know, working capital to pay your payroll, or health insurance, all the, you know, daily necessities to keep a business up and running. The difference on that one is, the deadline goes all the way until October 8th. So if you know of a business that's struggling to stay afloat into the summer months, just say, lack of tourism, things of that nature, we are resources available. Don't let any business, you know, struggle with that. And it also includes all the surrounding counties of Los Angeles as well. So if you know anyone in the future, again, we are resources available. The other big thing to tell you is, just the first year, there's no interest, there's no payments that accrue. So you could turn around, if you're waiting on insurance, start with us, and then you can pay it back tomorrow. There's no prepayment penalty as well. Outside of that, we're here for the long haul, and if you have any questions, please give me a shout.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hope I don't mess this up. Hi, guys, how are you? I just wanted to touch on a topic that's very important to me, and thank you for allowing me to talk. I love you guys. Bachi, it's one of the oldest sports, and it's been around for quite a long time. I don't want to get into the statistics, but it came from Egypt, and the Italians made it popular. There's variations in different places, but it's a community sport. It's something that I've found, for my mental health, to be one of the most significant things that I've ever experienced. It's very personal to me. I don't want to get too emotional, but it's something that I know that this community, I've been here 22 years, like, I've never come here, because I've never had anything to ask for. You guys have done everything you need to do to make this a great city. And it is the heart of the South Bay. So I'm pleading with you, I don't know how to do it, but I'm asking, with your help, to potentially provision, maybe a study, or something that could potentially look at how this could impact the city, to prove what I know to be true, based on my own, you know, experience. But it'll enhance things that are absent, which in this case is connections. We talk about the seniors and the importance of their interactions, but often, it's not having something to do. And with bachi, there's no limit to the potential, but it has to be sanctioned in a way that the, it has to be sanctioned in a way that the awareness is easy for someone who's maybe never heard of it. Because it's a very simple sport, and I can get into the nuance, but I prefer you just to kind of look it up on your own. But what it will do is, it will create community engagement. It will allow for the things that I have personally, like I said, benefited from. And I can take the time and do some research, and get you studies and things of that nature, but I'd rather just appeal to you on the emotional side, that this is something that is absent currently, and unfortunately, there aren't many cities that have it. I mean, I was born and raised, not born and raised, but I went to school in Torrance. They have courts. They've been down now for almost seven months, eight months. I've been working with the city to find out when and how, but eventually, they're going to be here at the end of the month. But I've traveled to Huntington Beach, I've traveled to all these locations, just so I can keep a place to go to, to satisfy this absence that I need for community and other things. So I'll know I'm coming up in a few minutes, but if you have any questions or things that I can answer for you, I certainly would love to. But I promise you, my best friend's 82. I mean, we hang out all the time, so I mean, to give you some context, there is no limit to, you know, how things, the gaps that are bridged with this level of communication. But it's a very neutral environment, and it's a low-impact sport. So, you know, you can do it, whether you're in, you can walk out of your nursing home, you can come out from virtually anywhere and interact. And there's, there's nothing limiting that. It's just a nice conversation with a game that's going on in the meantime. So I really hope that Longdale is the city that helps me do this. But after being here 22 years, I don't want to go anywhere else and start this project. I want it to happen here, and then let everybody else follow our lead.
Okay. Thank you. Give us your name, sir.
Matthew.
Matthew. What's your last name?
Brown, B-R-A-N. I appreciate your time.
Appreciate your time, thank you, guys.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Yes, sir.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. My name is Josh, and I'm one of the members of the Longdale Beautification Committee. As of right now, we, I would like to remind the community that we have applications open for art submissions to help cover, you know, beautify our utility boxes. And also, I'd like to remind, you know, residents that, you know, potentially could be watching this, that with our Longdale Beautification Committee, we have meetings every Thursday, every second Thursday of the month, over at the Harold E. Hoffman Community Center on the second floor. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Holly Osborne from Redondo Beach, and I want to introduce myself to some of the guests in the audience. I'm a registered professional engineer in the state of California. I'm not civil, but I do know my way around a tape measure. And I just provided one of your BNSF people this diagram, which you guys have seen. And I also have no stranger to the BNSF specs, okay? And when I first got the BNSF specs, the first thing I did to make sure that I understood them, was take my tape measure and go measure the way that, but this was laid out already. And son of a gun, I understood the specs. 90% of it was correct, 95. So here's the question. When you add new stuff in here, or when Metro was projecting to add new lines in here, I want to know what questions to ask, and how the specs are going to be modified. And I'm not going to bore you all with that, but that's why I came here. I came here because I heard that there were going to be BNSF people here, and I've been looking for BNSF people for six years. So I was excited. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Michelle Pina, I'm the Library Manager at Longdale Library. Thank you for the opportunity to give me a few moments to give you guys some updates on the library. So first of all, I want to thank the ones who showed up for the Library Fest. Thank you for your support and your participation. This happened on April 12th, last Saturday. Again, thank you for the support. The event was a total success. We welcomed families, community members, and partners for a joyful day, activities and learning, and good connections with the community. Aside from that, I want to let you guys know about some of the programs we're going to be having at the library in May. For early learners, ages 02-5, we're going to have Storytime Fridays, May 2nd through the 30th, from 10:30 to 11:00. Throughout the whole month of May, we're going to have a program called You Got Mail. So children can write a letter to Elephant and Piggy, which are book characters, and this is going to help them create and develop early literacy skills. For children ages 5 to 12, we have reading buddies every Friday from 4 to 5. And children build reading confidence by reading aloud to a buddy. So we have the teens who come out to the library, they volunteer their time, and the children between 5 and 12 consent and read to them. We also have the creation station throughout the whole month, May 3rd and the 31st, from 10:00 AM to 4:30 PM. And this is an open and the crafting fun, with all the supplies provided. For adults, we have new parents engagement sessions. This will be, the first one will be Thursday, May 1st, from 10:00 to 11:00. So new parents can come and learn about library resources and connect with other new parents. We also have the Positive Parenting Program Seminar. This will happen on Wednesday, May 7th, from 12:00 to 2:00. We also have the ESL Conversation Club on Tuesday, May 6th, from 5:00 to 6:00. And for teens, we're going to have our teen advisory board meeting Saturday, May 24th, from 12:00 to 1:00 PM. So our library continues to grow and welcome all-inclusive space for everyone in the community. We're excited about these enriching programs that we're going to be having the next month. So we hope to see you all there. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks for Easter, guys. That's always our favorite event.
All right. You're welcome. Right. Okay, so we'll, we'll, public comment at this time is bringing up the diocese. We're joined by Councilman Terravera.
Thank you, and welcome to everybody. I wanted to apologize for being late. We had an incident at our property, and I do want to thank the sheriff for responding quickly. Somebody was apprehended there, and so apparently, I think it's part of what our society is going through. I think they're trying to form a camp on our property. So, so the matter was taken care of, and I wanted to thank the sheriff, and I want to thank you guys for being here, too. Being a little late, and about the bachi, what I was hearing about, if it's to, anything that enhances and enriches our programs, I'm all in. You know, if there's something we could do, we should do it. So I hope that's something we can entertain. Josh, I thank you for being here, and thank you for making that call to Longdale resident artists. So I'm excited to see something. I just came through, I don't know if it was Manhattan Beach or where, and I was pointing out to my wife, that's what we're going to do in Longdale. We're going to do those utility boxes. So I'm excited to see some of the artwork that's going to be on display throughout our With Ms. Osborne, BNSF, well, that's an ongoing fight, and I'm, I just wish there was, I've seen some of the things that have been posted about how aggressive they're getting, as wanting to arrest people that are walking on the road, and brought to my mind, you know, the, some of those old western movies where, where the water's running through someone's property, a spring, and then down, and then they put a dam there, and then I hope, I wish we could put some type of, something there, so they say, well, hey, it's there, so can't move it. So, but, you know, we just have to work together. I believe that our residents and us as a city, we have a very valid concern about the safety of the homeowners there in that area, and the things that it's going to do for our city. I want to apologize for, to Michelle, for not being there. I put it on my calendar and everything. Somebody stopped over the house, and then I got to talking, and then, and I saw Pat earlier at the Easter egg hunt, and he said, you're going? I said, yeah, I'm going. And it just blew up, so. So I just apologized. But I'm going to be there, okay? So thank you again for coming out, and I apologize for being late.
Okay. It's okay.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out tonight. I was appreciating the variety of concerns that came up. You know, sometimes we only get one issue, so that was interesting. I'll start off with the question about, what can we do about making information more accessible to residents with regards to homelessness? If our director could remind me when our next subcommittee, I think it's this month, at the end of the month, we have another solutions committee?
Yes, we have a subcommittee at the end of this month.
I think it's the last Monday of the month, if I'm not mistaken.
It's this Monday, coming up, next week.
Oh, next week, okay. It's okay, I'll be there, don't worry. So if we could kind of bring up some of these topics, because I think that he posed an excellent question with regards to the uniformity, and it isn't just a one-city issue, it's a regional issue. And then with regards to, this was given to us by a resident, can, we get more information regarding the metro active transportation program with regards to Redondo Beach Boulevard Active Transportation Corridor? Just interested in where we fit in with all of that, and what's been done and what's to come?
Mayor, Council, we'll have, ask Community Development to dig that up and get that sent to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. And then, going through my notes, I want to thank the SBA for showing up. I think the representative left, but we don't always get stakeholders that come, or resources coming out, so that was nice to hear those options for those that may need them. And then with regards to the sport bachi, I think the resident left, I wasn't quite clear about clear about the ask, whether it was to incorporate programs such as our Councilmember Talavera brought up, or whether it was to study it and its impacts. And so I guess I'm a little confused. I don't know if, I think he left.
Mayor, Council, we have staff, Jason Mentor, he's out there.
Okay, perfect, okay, perfect.
And so we'll get more information and bring it back.
Okay, perfect. If we could just get more, because I have played the sport before. It's actually really fun. And so I guess we'll get more information on that. And then, yeah, thank you to our beautification committee member for showing up and reminding everybody about that. And I'll just leave it at that. Thanks to everybody that came out tonight.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out and speaking. Michelle, I did enjoy that little time that I spent out there. It was great to see our residents, you know, hang out inside the library and the different booths outside. Thank you for putting that together. Andrew, thank you for giving us that package with all that information, and for representing Longdale and the Coalition. Let's see. Josh, thank you for the reminder, and for keeping us up to date on the artwork on the boxes. And that is all for me right now. Thank you.
Okay, I want to thank everybody that came out and spoke tonight. Michelle, we had a great time, the mayor and I. I almost came this close to having doing flowers in his hair in the picture. And if you didn't show it up, they had a photo booth where, and then Javergio can come in there, and they get decorated in flowers, the whole body gets decorated. It's pretty cool. The events were fantastic. Let me see, I was hoping the guy from, this, what is this? The SPA was still here, because I want to know why churches aren't covered in, because it is, it's federal funding, but we have several churches in the fire zones that aren't, can't be rebuilt, because there's no federal funding, so they're reaching out to individuals who live there, which I think a travesty. The churches should be covered, too. They burned down the same fire. And I believe Ryan and Andrew, I'm a bicycle enthusiast, so I'll be in contact with you about that. Josh, thanks for the update. Bachi ball, I played when I was a VP manager in Culver City. They had a course over there. And I played on my lunch hours. But I'm going to tell you, the hardest thing, bachi ball, is trying to get translations from an Italian person to an English person. I didn't understand a word they said. I shook the ball and hit the ball, and they said, okay, you're done. But it is a fun sport, and I agree with you, Matthew, it's a fun sport. And with that, Robert, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Matthew, for bringing this to our attention. Bachi, I'm not familiar with this sport. I looked it up, but I'd like to get to know it a little better. Okay, thank you. Okay. Josh, thank you for bringing up the utility boxes. You know, the utility boxes, when we, when we paint the utility boxes, it's going to bring a new face to the city of Longdale. Because when you drive through the town and the utility boxes are nice and vibrant, that speaks a lot to the community. So I'm in favor of that. Thanks, so, thank you, Josh. Michelle, thank you for inviting us to the Library Fest. We had a good time. I couldn't stay as long as I wanted to, so I kind of disappeared a little bit. I don't know if you noticed it, but I disappeared, but it was, it was good. Ray, thank you for bringing up the homeless issue. Where is Ray? I don't have my glasses on. He stepped out, okay. Thank you for bringing up the homeless services issue. And Ryan, thank you for bringing up the local transit network. I'm in favor of that. I have to look into it closely, closer, I should say. I'm also in favor of seeing that I have a youngster that's a student at El Camino College. I'm trying to convince her to ride a bike, because I, no, we had, we had these bikes that was given away at work, and so she's only ridden, she's only on road at one time. And so I want her to ride the bike to the college, to El Camino, so I feel comfortable knowing that there's a bike route to El Camino. So thanks for bringing that up, Andrew. Let's see, what else we have here? Oh, can we get this, Mr. City Manager, placed on the website, the SBA information?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we'll take a look at that.
Because what I didn't know, or what I found out tonight, is that it's not just businesses. So if you're an individual, you're a homeowner, you could apply for low interest loans as well. So if you can put that on the website, that'd be great. And that's all I have. Thank you, thank you. All right, let's move our agenda. We are now on the consent calendar, item G, three through seven, what is the pleasure of this body concerning such?
If there's no questions, your additions, subtractions, I'll make a motion and go to stack for presentation.
Okay, motion been made by Kearney.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Quavis. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
Apologies, Kearney made the motion, and the second was?
Quavis.
Thank you. For the consent calendar, the motion passes unanimously.
All right, thank you. Item eight, consideration of councilization of the July 7th council meeting. I don't think, we need a staff report on this one. What is the pleasure of the body concerning this? Are there any discussions on this item?
I do have a question.
Yes, Mayor.
Sorry, I forgot to press the button. Why are we canceling it? Is staff taking Monday off, or is there a particular reason?
Mayor, Council, we traditionally, you know, take this Monday off before the holiday. I just wanted to point out, too, the council has not gone dark, even all of last year, but typically before the, we typically take this day off and request it to go dark.
So if something was to happen, we would call a special meeting prior to our next meeting in July?
If, if that was the will of the council, and we met the Brown Act requirements and the noticing, yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Any discussion on this item? What's the pleasure of this body concerning this item?
Well, I'll make the motion to go to stack presentation and cancel the July 7th to 25 meeting.
Okay, so the motion's been made by Mr. Pat Kearney that we cancel the July 7th council meeting.
And I'll second it.
Seconded by Suarez. Any discussion on the motion? Will the council please vote?
For item number eight, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, item nine, Sewer Maintenance Division of Los Angeles County Public Works Department regarding the proposed rate increase. Let's hear from the representative.
Council members, I'm going to give you a really brief introduction to introduce Andrew.
Okay, thank you.
The, the city of Longdale received notification of a proposed rate increase for sewer services beginning July 1st of this year. And basically, in order for this to be approved, it must follow the requirements of Proposition 218, where there will be a public hearing, and also providing a protest process for it. And based on those requirements, we decided to invite the Los Angeles County Public Works Department to give us some information about this rate increase and all that. And with us now is Andrew Njumba, the Assistant Deputy Director for the Sewer Maintenance Division from the Los Angeles County.
Thank you, Director. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, city staff, and residents of the great city of Longdale. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here today to present to you the proposed sewer service charge increase within the consolidated sewer maintenance district. Just as another view of what we're going to cover, we will talk about what the consolidated sewer maintenance district, for those who may not be familiar. We'll also talk about the services we provide in maintaining the city's sewer system. We will talk about financials, including the proposed rate increase, and then we'll also talk about some engagement that we're going to be doing as part of this effort. So basically, the consolidated sewer maintenance district is a financing district that was put together to collect sewer service charges for the operation and maintenance of sewer, sewer systems within member cities and within the any corporate county area. The sewer maintenance district operates under agreements from the cities that have granted consent and jurisdiction for us to maintain your sewer system. There are about 500,000 parcels within the sewer maintenance district, all within 38 member cities and then incorporated county area. We have about 2 million-plus customers. We do maintain four wastewater treatment plants through special service zones. Our sewer line infrastructure consists of more than 4,600 miles of sewer lines, and then we also have 87 pump stations. I will go into the actual infrastructure within the city shortly here. We do provide sewer services throughout Los Angeles County, all the way from the Antelope Valley all the way to the west towards Ventura. We have six service areas. Longdale is actually within our Longdale service area, and we have 200-plus employees that we actually use to provide this service. So it's important to kind of explain our role in terms of maintaining the sewer line. So the sewer lines that we maintain are the sewer lines in the street that we call the local main sewer line. The line that goes from the local main sewer line to the properties, also known as the house lateral, is maintained by the property owners. Our system is known as the collection system, and what it does is it collects wastewater and conveys it to larger sewer lines, we call trunk lines, that are operated and maintained by the sanitation district, and that goes to their treatment plants for treatment and disposal. It goes without saying that municipal sewer systems make the modern way of life possible. In addition, they do protect public health, they ensure environmental protection, and they actually help our cities grow in a resilient and sustainable manner. So it is very important that we keep the systems operating at a very high level. So the services we provide for the city can be grouped in three main categories. The main one is preventive maintenance. This includes things like sewer line cleanings, responding to service requests for, you know, things like odors or noisy manholes, or even pests. And another big chunk of this is helping the cities comply with all regulations pertaining to the wastewater system. We also televise the sewer lines every so often to assess the condition and come up with plans for repairs when need arises. And then another service we do provide is 24-hour emergency response to address things like sewer, sewer stoppages, overflows, and making sure that those are addressed in a timely manner. So specifically in the city, you have about 5,800 parcels, which corresponds to about 11,400 sewage units. A sewage unit is the basis under which the sewer service charge is actually charged, and it represents, for example, a single-family home. So a single-family home would be one sewage unit. The city's infrastructure is about 77,000 of sewer lines and approximately 700 manholes. The maintenance we do for the city on a regular basis includes sewer line cleanings. Just last year, we cleaned about 75,000 feet of the city's sewer system, and then we inspect all the manholes twice a year. And then if we find any deficiencies, we perform the repairs for the cities. And just wanted to kind of point out that although we do conduct the operation and maintenance of the sewer system, the city does remain the owner of the sewer infrastructure, and they also do have some responsibilities towards the infrastructure. So why are we proposing rate increases? We've actually had the same sewer service charge since 2014. That was the last time we actually increased our sewer service charge. During this time, inflation has increased the cost of labor, the cost of material, the cost of construction. Labor alone, the last 10 years, has increased more than 60%. So what we are finding ourselves is that we have increasing costs and stagnant revenue to operate the sewer system. The district throughout the county does collect about 42 million to provide sewer operation and maintenance services. As I mentioned, the cost to operate and maintain the system has continuously increased over the last few years, during the COVID years, and we are finding ourselves in a place where our expenditures exceed our revenues, and we are facing steep decline in our reserves. We do expect that at the end of the next fiscal year, we'll actually have a negative balance. Important to note that majority of the funds that we collect actually go into the sewer system. 60% is used for operations and maintenance, basically preventive maintenance, and then 30% goes into condition assessments and repairs and rehabilitation, with 5% for emergency response, and then 5% for administrative costs. So the district hired an independent third-party consultant to look at the district finances and recommend a sustainable revenue stream to be able to meet the obligations of the district. The result of this study was an engineering report that actually has been shared with the city for review. And what has come out of this is that we are proposing to increase the current sewer service charge of $50 per year by $14 per year for three consecutive years, and then by the rate of inflation for another couple of years. So what we'll be looking at is about $45 to $46 increase after five years. A single-family homeowner right now who's paying about $50 per year would be paying about $96 at the end of five years. Multi-family units typically pay a multiple of the sewer service charge based on the number of units, and businesses also pay a multiple of the sewer service charge based on land use per county code. So this is a comparison of what rates are being paid by others within the area. Most LA County residents will pay two charges for sewer services. The charge you see in blue is a collection charge, typically charged by the district or the city, and then the charge you see in red is a treatment and disposal charge by the sanitation district. The Culver, Culver City has a single charge for both collection and disposal and treatment. And as you can see, the charge that we have right now for the district is quite low compared to others within the area. And even after our proposed increase, we expect to continue being amongst the lowest sewer service charge within the region. Some of these jurisdictions are also proposing increases of their own here in the near future. So as the Director of Public Works mentioned, anytime a government is proposing a new fee, property fee, like a sewer service charge or an increase, we have to go through the Proposition 218 process. And what that requires us to do is notice all the property owners, affected property owners, let them know what their increase is, provide them with a means of conducting a of conducting a protest, let them know of the public hearing and how to participate in that hearing, and we are going above and beyond just those requirements. We are making sure that we are reaching out to the communities, we are attending presentations, committee events, and the main reason is we want to make sure that residents within the district, your city of Landale, understand the sewer services they receive, they understand what they're paying for, why the rate increase is needed, and why it's needed at this moment. We are also working with different community-based organizations, co-creating materials, and helping with multilingual support. As far as timeline, we completed our rate study in January, and beginning in February, we started attending events and committee presentations, we had a couple of them to member cities, and March, April, we are continuing with the effort to engage and just communicate and educate. Early May, your citizens will receive a Proposition 218 notice that will inform them about the rate increase, about opportunities to engage with public works. There'll be information about open houses, webinars, and community meetings, and then it'll also tell them about the public hearing that the Board of Supervisors is going to hold on June 24th, and at that public hearing, in the absence of majority protest of all affected properties and approval by the Board, this will be approved and it will be effective July of 2025. These charges are collected with property taxes, so you will see them on your property tax for the next fiscal year. Like I said, we're going to be sending out Proposition 218 notices. They're going to be both English and Spanish notices, and it's going to have all the information that's required, a little bit more education about what the district is, what it does, what services it provides, and then opportunities to engage with public works regarding these proposed increases. We welcome any comments or questions. There's some contact information, both by email or by phone, and then, of course, we do have a 24-hour emergency line that anyone can use at any time. If you see anything, suspect anything, we're always available to respond to any issues the city has. Really looking forward to continuing our collaboration in ensuring a high level of operational maintenance of the city's sewer system, and that is my presentation. Happy to take any questions if you have any.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. Let's hear from Mayor Protem.
I have two questions. On the proposed rate increase for the sewer units, that's a five-year agreement, correct?
It's a five-year increase, yes.
So let's say you go to year four and it's only supposed to be a $1.85 increase, and you want to do a $14.
Yes.
Is this going to be locked in? There's not going to be any changes, correct? These are what the residents are going to pay?
Yes, so the fixed rates are the first three years at $14 per year for three years, and then the last two years, that's an estimate on about 2% inflation rate, but what it does is it allows us to increase it by the rate of inflation as determined by the Consumer Price Index.
Okay.
For the last two years.
The next question is vacant residential property. You're charging a half a unit. Who's getting that bill?
It's on the property tax. So as you're paying your taxes, you're paying your direct assessment such as sewer service charges.
Okay, but if it's vacant, somebody just said, you know, I'm going to rebuild, I'm selling this off or whatever. So they will still get that half a percent on their bill if they even don't live anymore?
If it's vacant, they do pay the sewer service charge just because the sewer line is available for their use. Actually, that does contribute to the value of the property. But if there's no way that they can actually connect the sewer line, we can waive that charge.
Okay. So it's going to be locked in at roughly $46 for a five-year contract?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, thank you for that report. So we just need to receive and file?
Thank you for your time.
Anything that we need to do? Any action we need to take?
Andrew, regarding, there's a public hearing. The public hearing, if anybody would like to attend for any reason, where do we find that information?
So the Proposition 218 notice that's going to be coming out at the beginning of May is going to have the information about the public hearing, the location, how to protest the rate increases. You can either mail them in, or you can actually walk them into the public hearing and hand them to an agent of the Board of Supervisors. So it's June 24th, it's going to be at, you know, downtown at Kenneth Han. And there's also going to be like a website, so residents can actually follow a link on the notice or like a barcode, and they can get more information on our website.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, for us, it is receive and file this report and wait for the materials to show up in the mail.
Okay, without any objections, so moved. Let's go to item 10. Traffic calming effort for 147th Street.
Mayor, Mayor Council, I just want to preference Locho's presentation. So we put this together, it's, there's no hard and fast on this. You know, we had to put it together real quick, so feel free to, you know, edit, make any changes you see fit. We just came up with these, they're not fully, you know, vetted. We're still working on those things, but I just wanted to let you know that, you know, we only had a short time, so go ahead, Locho.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Do I need to step down, city attorney, or could I stay up here?
Thank you for asking. Given that it's less than 10% of the public and that your residence is within 500 feet of the area, the public generally exception would not apply. So yes, I would, I thank you for raising that, and stepping down would be appropriate. And for the benefit of the public, this is under the Political Reform Act, and the council member properly announced or asked the question about whether her residence being within 500 feet of the street at issue causes a conflict. The best course is to recuse, and so she is doing so. If the public wonders, the council member does have the ability to speak about this in her personal capacity as it has an effect on that piece of property. Whether she chooses to or not is her decision. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Let's have the presentation.
Okay, thank you, mayor and council members. And thank you, Sean, for explaining that. So how I see this report in a way is a little bit of an update and information of where we've been, because at the last council meeting is where we were asked to come up with ideas, and this is really a presentation of ideas, but not, no decisions at this point of public works anyway. So traffic calming efforts on 147th Street. This street extends for about 4,500 feet from Inglewood to Prairie, and it's divided in two sections, the west section at Inglewood and then the east section on Prairie. I would like to separate it in that fashion because even though it has the same name, it is two different streets. On the west side, it's a one-travel lane in each direction. On the east side, it's two lanes per direction. In November of last year, we presented to council, Public Works presented to council, a report for the east side of 147, which basically studied what could be implemented on that section of the road from Hawthorne to Prairie to make it a little bit safer. And in the report, there were several recommendations if we wanted to implement some road diets. Other recommendations included striping and also some stop sign and signage changes. What we have done to date is we did stripe both sides of 147th Street. The crosswalks were modified, as well as all the stop signs were changed with the latest technology on reflectivity, hopefully making it easier for drivers to notice that there's stop signs out there, especially at night. Also, on March 17 of this year, city council asked staff to look into updating the speed hump policy, but to update it, including modern measures of traffic calming devices. So that's also something that staff is working on. I also want to add as background here that in February, study in February of this year, city began deploying all the new radar speed trailers. We have two right now, and we deployed them. We started in 147th Street as part of the educational efforts of controlling speeding in the areas in the city. So we moved them around to several locations. Additionally, the sheriff department added patrolling to the 147th Street area in order to provide additional enforcement, and we're trying this as a combination, see how do we educate the public, the drivers, to behave better. So following April 7th report, we have been asking for proposals from traffic engineers, both for updating our policy for devices to implement as well as the speed humps. Also, we've been asking for proposals to prepare the second part of the study to cover now Inglewood to Gravilla, because we only have a report for the east side. Talking a little bit about the proposal, I'm sorry, the report that we already have for the east side of 147, some of the ideas in there, I mentioned our road diet, but this will allow us, if we change the, if we change the number of travel lanes on the east side, will allow us to look more in detail about the speed limit on that street. The east side of 147th Street is posted at 35 miles an hour, and the report that was prepared towards the end of the year, last year, has drivers driving around the speed limit a little below. There's the 85 percentile of our drivers are driving around 26 miles an hour on the east side of 147. Making changes there will allow us to possibly implement lowering the speed limit. On the west side of 147, we are posted at 25 miles an hour. Let me see what other good information. We were asked to look into immediately coming up with measures that we could implement immediately to somewhat slow down the drivers and also look into permanent, long-term measures that we could do. That is why for the long-term ones, is why we're asking for proposals to come, prepare a good report and let you know what we need. But in the meantime, we obtained some quotes for doing speed humps. What will it cost today to put some speed humps on 147th Street? I want to talk a little bit about speed humps so we understand them better. There's two types of speed humps. At our last meeting, last council meeting this month, many people showed up and mentioned how every city has speed humps here and there, including us, on our parking lot in the back, and that's the distinction I want to make. There's a lot of speed humps for parking lots, but there's not speed humps on the streets. That's the difference I really want to make so we understand it. Every speed hump you see on a parking lot does not work on a street. The difference between one and the other is the speed limit. A speed hump for a 25 mile an hour road needs to be designed to be a 25 mile an hour speed hump. What it really means, you can still drive at 25 miles an hour safely with those speed humps, but if you double your speed, all of a sudden, yeah, you're going to have problems because those speed humps are for that speed. In a parking lot, the speed humps are really meant to slow you down to 5 miles an hour and are the ones that you really don't want to break your car on and all that. Now, the speed humps that I speak of for the 25 miles an hour road, we got a quote from a contractor that is currently going to start work at the city, and they are paving contractors. They gave us a price of $8,000, roughly $8,000 per speed hump if we want to build them. These speed humps are in your report, they show a photo, they have the shallow stripe on top, they also have a sign that says "speed hump," and it's written on the pavement. We got this good price because we were asking for possibly 11 speed humps, one at each block of 147th Street. If we ask for probably one only speed hump, the price will be higher and maybe lower if we go for, if we double the amount of speed humps. Additional measures that we could implement, not as rapidly as speed humps, is changing the access to 147th Street from Inglewood. It has been talked in, I've heard this idea in different places. This is something I want to ask the person that will prepare our report for West 147th Street, but the whole idea is to maybe don't let drivers turn onto 147th Street from Inglewood. That way, it's only an exit from the neighborhoods, which means the traffic will be greatly reduced because it's used as a shortcut, right? The whole idea is that people don't want to take Rosecrans or Marine or other bigger streets because of congestion, and they want to take the shortcut here. That's an idea that we could explore if council likes it. This idea will take coordination with the city of Redondo Beach because there was a project that created this median and this turf signal synchronization and turf lane, I'm sorry, turn lane left, and therefore we are changing that. It's a bigger conversation, but it could be a solution for our problems if we are interested. In the meantime, while we are obtaining all these proposals... In the meantime, while we are obtaining all these proposals, there's the possibilities if we want to implement something now in the interim. There's a possibility, it's also on your report, using traffic barrels with a light. It's these barrels that are about four feet high, about 24 inches in diameter, and if we place them right at the intersections in a cluster of four, they will point to the driver, remind them there's a stop sign, a must stop, and then you have to use this cluster of lighter barrels to use them in a way as a traffic circle. Very temporary, low cost. Each of these intersections will cost about $1,000 if we want to implement something now as an idea, see if they work in the meantime. I provided several photographs of interim traffic circles actually, and you're going to see the differences. In some cases, it's just traffic cones put in a circle with a curve, makeshift curve, which is a rubberized material, some signage. It's the same idea as my traffic barrels in the center. This is just bigger. It will create more of a traffic circle feeling. If we like the traffic circles after a pilot project, if we want to try some here and there, the last photograph there shows more of a permanent traffic circle, which is a raised median. We could do bricks or whatever we like with signage, and people will know to, of course, what the meaning is of all that. At this time, these are the ideas we put together. I wanted to inform you that staff has been working on getting proposals together. As a matter of fact, today I got some, the cause, even though I don't have enough, I only received one, the cause for updating our policy for speed humps and adding all the other traffic elements. That came out short of $20,000, that proposal. They probably will take three months to give us some policy and present it to council, of course, and all that. The, another proposal that I received is for the preparation of the traffic analysis for 147 West, and that also has a very, I have to talk to them. I received two. One is for $12,000 and one is for $19,000. So something we have to figure out what the issue is, but a report is costing us about $20,000 each. If we want to move forward with that, of course, I will come to council to award a contract to those people. But that's information I have for you today. I wanted to let you know this is where we are, and if you would like to provide some direction of any sort, we are happy to take it and keep moving forward.
Okay. Thank you for the
Any questions, let me know.
Okay. Thank you for that report. Let's hear from the council. Let's hear from Bernie, that's where it is.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify, the east side on 147th, we still have to analyze the speed, right?
It has already been analyzed in the report on the east side on Prairie.
To reduce the speed? Because when we change Prairie, right, that speed, it's the same speed now, so would that trigger us to have to
So, thank you for the question, and changing speed limits is not as easy as it should be, but there's different ways of doing it. One is making a change to the street. If we make the change, then it will be certainly fall under a 25 mile an hour because it's very short to it. Another way of doing it is creating a residential district. Basically, to fall under residential district, we need to have enough residential properties in the stretch. I don't have the exact information how many need be, but that is another way of doing it if we don't make changes to the street. But yes, we have not, we don't have a definite answer now that we could just change the speed limit.
Okay.
Mr. Kearney. Three comments. The circle, the roundabout, I don't think that's feasible. Where are you going to put it? On the corners where there's four stop signs? That would be kind of personally asinine to do that there because you're going to have traffic going around in a circle, not stopping anyway, and it will become a landing zone for high-speed cars if you put them down the street. And Inglewood Avenue? I like the idea that Councilman Talavera brought up, but my question is, well, if you don't turn there, then come down to Condon, then come down to Firmona, Gravilla, and cut through and still get there. So all we're doing is preventing them for a couple, one long street. What happened to the, I thought we were researching or buying tape for the poles. What happened to that?
Thank you for the question. We have also been looking into that. We, council directed to find some cause, what will it cause, to put all the stop signs around the school sites at the city. We came up with 62 stop signs that will benefit from this. It will provide hopefully safety around schools. Excuse me. And it's short of $10,000 in materials.
Okay.
If the city crews do it, and we will do some daily if there's interest for that. Currently, there's not a fan put aside for this.
Okay, then what about the little speed dots on the streets to the humps?
That particular one, I would like a traffic engineer in the report to comment about it. I'm not too much of a connoisseur of the benefits of that, other than noise. It provides noise.
So we're waiting for other information to come. So we have no solutions right now. You're still, I don't like the Lenners. I don't like them. That's my personal opinion. I don't think they're going to do any good. I think cars are going to use these as targets and knock them down. But I thought we went ahead and directed to get the tape, but it may be an error. But I'll pass it on to you to next.
Okay, let's hear from Councilmember Teravira, and then we'll take comments from the public.
Okay. So first of all, I just want a clarification because is there, is the west side problem greater than the east side problem, or is it equal?
From the comments we received last week, 80% of the, 90% of the people that showed up were from the west side. People running over from Inglewood, coming in and full speed through there. However, there's, some people came in to comment from the east side, but they were less, less. And since we don't receive and public works so many calls anymore, by the way, is what has happened here. There's no request to go and take some action. So they could be the same. They are different because the streets are different. One is wider, higher speed. One is narrower, lower speed.
And shorter.
And shorter.
All right. I think again, it's, to me, it's about driver behavior. I live on 154th, and I was going west, and as I was going to the stop sign from where the school is, some lady just drove by and didn't even stop. But it's not because she didn't see the stop sign. So, you know, I don't know how it is that we're going to train or improve drivers' behavior because that's the situation. And I think, you know, I had suggested at the last meeting to put a signal like that, but I'm reading here in your report that 147th Street doesn't meet the criteria for a traffic signal.
Correct.
Okay, so that great idea is out of the question, right? So what do we do next? And then we're talking about speed humps, and then I wanted to know, do we have any data on speed humps that contribute to accidents? Because, you know, if you're going, if you're taking a speed bump or speed hump at 50, 65 miles an hour, you're probably going to get airborne. And then what happens? And who's responsible, who's liable for that? You know, so I think, I don't know if speed humps is the way to go, you know, because, I mean, depending on the, I think also on the vehicle that you're driving will, is the driver's behavior. You know, I drive a big truck, so the speed bumps or speed humps that are at Costco, they're no problem for me to take. Okay? So I drive fast over them, I'll tell you, because it, you know, it's in a parking zone and I should be going slower, which, you know, I probably shouldn't doing, but I think it's also because of the vehicle that you have. So if someone is driving a big vehicle, they're not going to stop for a speed hump. And the speed hump, is there certain requirements based on the street length and width of how high they can be?
Yes, they're not very high, surprisingly. They are only about four inches high, but they extend for 12 feet. So it's not this little parking lot humps.
But are they, are they flat and spread out, or are they high?
Yeah, they are spread out on 12 feet, and the highest point is only four inches in the center. And they are designed for 25 miles an hour. If you have, for something else, it's going to be different, but 25 miles an hour, that is the design of a speed hump that are recommended to be installed where they install them.
Because from driving from different parts of the city and other cities, you know, I've come encountered with speed humps that are really just smooth, just going, and then you go up and then go over. But then there's other ones where you, you hit it and you know that your cars, you know, your tire has, there's a possibility of getting a flat tire. Okay? What kind are we going to put to change the behavior of the drivers, you know, that have that? So, and I don't know if maybe at certain parts, you know, thinking on the west side, there's that one, really that one area from Inglewood Avenue, you know, to probably, not all the way to Gravilla, but before that, probably Firmona or Manziel or Kingsdale. I think, you know, putting a traffic camera thing there and ticketing those drivers that are always just running the red, running the stop sign, you know? And coming to the east side, you know, there's like four, what, how many? There's four or five streets? You know, we can't have, I know that it's not feasible to put a camera at each stop sign there, so.
And I don't know if it's enforceable, running a stop sign on camera. Certainly a red light.
Okay.
But not a
A stop sign.
I don't know. That's, we can look into that for sure for next time we're here with the topic.
And the last thing I want to comment is on regarding the reflective tape on the stop signs. You know, I would suggest that we start only with 147th Street and not every stop, every stop sign in the city. Let's not go through that whole cause because in essence, what we're going to notice, what we're going to take note of is if it's changing drivers' behavior. So if it doesn't, then why are we going to make all this expense knowing that a little reflective tape is not going to change the way people drive?
Sure.
That's my, that's my thoughts on that.
Okay, let's hear from, thank you, Councilman. Let's hear from the public on this item.
Shirley Cuevas, resident of 147th and Firmona. This traffic started when we closed 149th Street from making a left turn if you were coming southbound on Inglewood. If we do the same thing on 147th, we're not going to see it on the traffic on 147th, but we'll see the traffic on the south, north-south streets, and it's going to continue the same issue. The residents of 147 are not the issue. The issue is the traffic that's coming between 4:00 PM through 7:00 PM on that street. They're all coming home from work and they're taking the shortcut to get to Hawthorne. There needs to be some type of solution, and I hope you listen to the residents that were here last time, last week or last meeting, because something will happen. They've already hit a couple of kids on bicycles. Things are going to be major. So I hope you all will listen to the residents and come up with a solution soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi there, Rhonda Hoffman-Gorman, and I'm a resident in the city of Longdale. I don't live along the 147th Street, but I would like to say that, yes, Councilmember Talavera, I agree completely. It's about the behavior of the drivers. I have a couple of concerns regarding this. As I said, and I have to say first off, I appreciate the time and energy that it has taken our staff to get the information as quickly as they have, so thank you, because it was obvious in the last council meeting that this is a big event. But my concern, like Councilmember Talavera said, is about the behavior, and one of the things that I think needs to be addressed is if I lived in that area and I suffered that heart attack, what would, what are some of the things, have we talked about it as a first responder coming to that house as far as what maybe they would like to see? Because I think that this is going to open up a Pandora's box, so to speak, because the people of 147th, they've done a beautiful job at organizing and getting this on the radar. But I have a feeling every other street in the city of Longdale is going to pop up and say that we have an issue here too. So I think the solution has to be bigger, and I like the idea of cameras, good idea. I like the idea of putting the tape and seeing if that helps, and I even like the idea of possibly closing down the 147th, but I think But I think, I don't think it's all going to be an immediate fix. But I also feel like we need to have some input from our first responders because I could just see the great big unit coming out. And if we have those speed bumps, like you said, some of them are smooth and some of them you're going to bottom out and lose a tire over. If I'm sitting there having the heart attack, I'm wanting them there 10 years, 10 minutes ago. If my house is on fire, I want them there 10 minutes ago, not having to. So I think that that's also a healthy part of that conversation.
Thank you.
Before decisions can be made. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Hi there, Andrew Blackney, resident of Longdale. So hearing this, I've heard a lot of talk about speed humps, which is very interesting to me because the actual name for this agenda item is traffic calming. And it seems like we're only addressing one portion of this, which is to say, speed humps, speed humps, speed humps. And that is not what this is. This is about general traffic calming. And this is one of the things that was in the report that was submitted to you guys for the east side of 147th Street, general traffic calming measures. Another thing that I'd like to address is the driver behavior. It, you are right, it is a driver behavior issue. You know what very much helps them? A physical implement that will force them to slow down or suffer consequences. I very much appreciate the world that some of you guys live in that must be fueled by some GTA V sort of world where you can damage your car and instantly get a new car. That's not the real world. If you damage your car, you suffer consequences from that. That comes from you speeding, that puts it on you. There is a burden on you to follow the rules of the road. The rules of the road on this street are to drive at the speed limit and to stop at stop signs. If you need to be physically reminded of that, whether that be with a traffic circle that you have to go around, that does not seem asinine to me. That seems like a good policy. Stop at the stop sign, go around the traffic circle, continue to the next one. That just seems like sound engineering to me and sound physical reinforcement. Again, I say this, physical reinforcement of driver behavior. This is not about putting a camera out there to have people say cheese as they go by. This is about physically telling them, you will stop at that stop sign. If you don't do that, it's shown time and time again that people will not stop. I very much appreciate the crosswalks they put there to indicate to people that on my side of the street, on the east side, that tell them, there is a stop here. You know what that has done? That has made it so that cars are stopping in the intersection, in the crosswalk because they see that farthest line, they say, that's the point that I need to go to. Slow down from here to this point and then continue going. So that is what that has done. That is not a physical implement. What the city needs to do, and it is basic, basic for the city to do this, is do public safety for their residents. The fact that you guys are complaining about the implements that are coming here from the great work that our Public Works Department has done. So have them come, if you don't like it, have them come back. But the city is asking you for physical implements. Please do that.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Huang, resident of Longdale, live on 147th Street. And the gentleman that was just here suffered an accident. I'm pretty sure you guys all knew that, right? He was hit. And that's his passion now, that's something he wants to complete for avoiding something like that to happen to someone else again. That's, that's what he wants to do because of what happened to him. That trauma is still there. Have you guys ever seen his scars? No? You should. When I saw him, I was like, good grief, what did this guy go through? Yeah, it would be nice to get something done there. If we can all get together like a city, like a community, it takes, what does it say? It takes a town or it takes a city, something like that? I forget that, right? That's what we're here, right? We could fix that, we can. I know you guys can, we can, together, we can do it. Also, touching up on Mrs. Hoffman's or Ms. Hoffman's, I did not to put the speed bumps because the first responders can't get through or whatnot. Well, I spoke to a first responder that I used to know that worked here. What is it, at 149 or 49? I always forget. They said that they should have never put those things on 149th and close to Roscrens because they can't get through if there's an emergency. And I believe that they know more than we do because they are first responders. And maybe we could talk to them and say, how do you guys feel about putting this or putting something else out there that might not affect you guys? Because if I'm having a heart attack or if I'm having, somebody's having a heart attack or something, we want you to be there ASAP. And she's right. But no one ever spoke to them about whatever those are called out there, the cement things and the bars and whatever. They said that those things, they can't get through that, even though they're fire trucks, they can't get through that. If there's a real emergency, there's traffic, they're going to be stuck there. Honestly, I don't even know why they put those things, to beautify, to stop traffic? I don't know. It didn't make sense to me when I saw them going up. Thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, sir.
Rental Abram, living near, between Gravilla and Firmona. Yeah, always concerned about traffic, people going through the stop signs. Tonight, though, I wanted to comment. The lengthy ADVET report provided me some perspective, actually went through it. It's long, it's over 50 pages. And I appreciate the director putting that on the agenda tonight along with his lengthy detailed staff report. From this study, I learned that when they did the traffic study, the number of vehicles traveling daily through 147, those cars over the speed limit were less than 1% and as high as 2.3%. From 2019 to 2021, there were nine accidents, basically less than five a year, apparently not attributed to speeding, with four in 2019, four in 2020 and one in 2021. There were no figures beyond those years. And the city has implemented some of the recommendations that were mentioned earlier, such as new stop signs, additional crosswalks with new retroflective painting. But we haven't really talked too much tonight what that detailed traffic report recommended. They didn't recommend speed humps. They recommended four road diet alternatives, were all similar, with similar improvements that would reduce the number of lanes, add a bike lane and that parking lanes, striping in each direction. There was also what they call a bulb out improvements are recommended at each intersection within the project. And those could be implemented with the other road diet improvements. No mention of speed bumps were mentioned in that report or other traffic calming devices being discussed tonight were mentioned in the ADVET report. I know that report was costly, but now we're looking at doing other reports. How much, what are they going to cost, like 20,000 each? Councilman Talavera brought up the issue of liability for speed humps. What I've found is that when we encounter sites for personal injury attorneys who specialize in cases where clients have been injured by speed bumps, in rare cases, airbags have been known to deploy or drivers lose control of their vehicles due to speed bumps. And then bicyclists may hit the bump and fly over the handles. There's a lot of liability issues available. But I think the city needs to also go back to the original traffic analysis report that we paid for. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello, Annette Owens, City of Longdale. I didn't know all of this about humps and bumps and I just wanted to look this up and I use my AI. And I wanted to also point out that my husband grew up on the east coast and I spent a couple of, almost a couple of decades there. There are circles, there are bumps, there's ice, there's potholes, there's all kinds of stuff. And the emergency vehicles get to where they need to go, they figure it out. So I wanted to see a comparison of speed humps to other traffic calming measures. Speed humps reduce vehicle speeds by four to 23 miles per hour and are the most effective in residential areas, school zones and places where moderate speed reduction to 15, 20 miles per hour is desired without excessive discomfort to drivers. They are less aggressive than speed bumps and more aggressive than speed cushions or speed tables. There's all kinds of stuff. Speed bumps are more abrupt, slowing vehicles to two to 10 miles per hour, making them suitable for parking lots or areas with heavy pedestrian activity, but not public roads due to their jarring effect. Speed cushions, similar to humps, but have wheel cutouts, allowing emergency vehicles and buses to pass with minimal delay. They are less aggressive and better for routes requiring frequent emergency access. Then there are speed tables that are flatter and longer than humps, providing a gentler ride and often used at pedestrian crossings. There's radar speed signs, electronic signs that alert drivers to their speed, which sometimes helps, reducing speeds by four to nine miles per hour, not that much. Effective in school zones and intersections, but less physically restrictive than humps. So there's a lot of measures that we can use and we should because this is the most important thing, is to make sure the city is safe. And the, the emergency vehicles, and maybe we can even have someone come out and talk about it, they'll figure it out. Because there are way worse road situations in other parts of the country than what we have in Longdale.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Juarez.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to thank everybody that came out. With regards to the options, there's like, it's, I guess I'm trying to focus on short term and then long term. And there's a lot of things I agree that we can do. Don't necessarily agree with the red tape. And I think, I don't know if that was discussed, I don't remember it. But I mean, you know, and maybe you understand too. I mean, I think your street too, Pat, where you live, was made one way to help with, I'm not quite sure the specifics. But, okay, well, you know, it's now one-way street. And, you know, I know you guys, I think if someone told you, put red tape on there to calm it, you know, you would probably be like, no, there's something bigger that needs to be done. So I think that's what some of the residents are saying. I think we've kind of focused too much on the speed humps. And there were a lot of comments at the last meeting with regards to alternative measures. I don't necess, I do agree with some of the comments that were made. I think you do need to test people's, what they're used to, you know, and what, I mean, you know, for example, sometimes when I'm driving to a location that I drive to a lot, I'm concentrating on other things and I'm like, I get, I arrive at the point and I'm like, I don't even remember, you know, I'm sometimes not even conscious because it becomes a habit. And so I think when you implement things that disrupt that, that pattern, you definitely can get the, you can get slower speeds or you can get other things. I know, for example, like the circles, when I've been in other areas, I have to look consciously and try to figure out, okay, are there any other cars? Which way do I go? You know, like I'm actively stopped and having to think in that moment how to navigate around that because I don't see it that often. I have spoken to some residents, they've brought up the circles, they've brought up the dots as possible immediate implementations. They've also brought up the inverted speed humps, the dips that we see sometimes and looking at those. And I'm learning a lot about some of this stuff too, about how it actually helps with the drainage too. And then other things for the future that I was wondering if we could look at too is, there are several businesses by at least the east side. Is there a way to maybe reduce and then also maybe even add some parking areas, diagonals? I mean, I don't know, there's, there's a bunch of things that you could do. But I do think that the lanes do need to be, the speed at least for the east side needs to be reduced. And because these are so near to schools, that's also somewhat of a very big issue that, you know, I'm not opposed to looking at the circles, looking at exploring the inverted speed humps, even the red dots, you know? Maybe just even if it's, if it's something that can be done quickly, if it's something that's going to somewhat deter or disrupt the behavior patterns, I'm all for looking into that. And then bike lanes, I think since we're looking at the LTN project, that could be something that we could look at. But I do think that, you know, something does need to be done here. And I think we do need to do some immediate fixes. And then I think, look at the long-term goal of the streets and whether we need to reduce the lanes, you know, then let's take a look at it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so after hearing all the discussion, I want to say that driver behavior, we've heard a lot about driver behavior today. But driver behavior is largely shaped by public policy. So you have traffic lights, you have traffic signs, you have speed limits. These are all public policy. And you don't get a choice. It dictates your behavior, else you would be punished, prummeted with a citation or whatever, whatever's appropriate. So I think the fix have to be, not just leave it up to each individual drivers because remember, everyone has their own points of view. But as a collective, that's what public policy is designed to do, is to make people act a certain way or prevent them from acting a certain way. So that's how I see this issue. This is a complex issue. Who knew it was going to be this complex, right? But we do have a couple of suggestions here that I think we should look into. I'm looking at page 22 of the Engineering Report from Advent Tech. And it speaks on Alternative Three, the road diet improvements. I kind of agree with this, or at least I want to try some of this to see how it works for the city of Longdale. It's a road diet improvement which consists of parking lanes, buffer zones, bike lanes and additional buffer zones and one traveling lane in each direction along a two-way left turn lane. So according to this report, it would reduce the number of lanes along 147th Street to two lanes in each direction, from two lanes to one lane. So I think we should look at that. Additionally, I think we should also look at the traffic circles. Because when you, if, if you're in any community and you're driving in any community and you got a circle that circle, you have to go around, that's added a tension that you have to, no matter how frequently you drive through the area. An example of that would be, you know, in Long Beach, they have a traffic circle, right? And I used to live in Long Beach 40 years ago, right? Even though I'm only 35. Y'all following me? And, and yes, there used to be accidents there, but it was so complex that you really didn't know which way was, it was directing you. Since then, they've kind of corrected it and made it clearer. I was through there a couple of years ago. And I said, oh, wait a minute, they made this much clearer, right? But it did what it's supposed to have done, it slowed the traffic down. So I think traffic circles would be good. The reflective stripes won't hurt. Especially when you have, at night, at nighttime or when you have weather-related issues or what have you, I think those would be beneficial. And also reducing the speeds along, at least along the. And also, um, reducing the speeds along, um, at, at least along the, the, the west side of, um, Hawthorne, not Hawthorne, um, one hundred and forty-seventh, Hawthorne Boulevard, I should say, um, reducing the speeds and possibly even reducing lanes. And then also, I heard from some residents that, that they want those, um, those, the dots. Some say red dots, but I've seen them in yellow as well. Um, I don't know why people say re- red, red dots, right? Right. And in my fact, I was, um, speaking to someone, and he was telling me that, that when, he's in a residential neighborhood, right? And, and by the way, that's one of my questions I had, what, if you can get that information, how many, um, does it have to be homes that's considered a residential? If you can get that, I appreciate that. But he was saying, you know, that you hear the, um, I forget which street this was, even though it's on my, my walking route, um, and he suggested some, um, dots, right? And I said, hmm, well, you know, those dots are for twenty-four hours, right? So although they're noisy, right, and they get even noisier as, as it gets, um, late in the day, right? Because everything calms, calms down. And, um, then he said, hmm, I never thought about that. Right? So, um, but the cushions would be probably appropriate for his street, right? And it's not one hundred and forty-seventh street, um, it's on my side of town. But I do, um, look in favor of looking at, under red or yellow dots, though. Uh, let's see, what else I have? Did you say those, uh, eleven speed humps, um, proposed?
Uh, yes, I, I counted eleven sections between stop signs, so one we go in between each stop sign.
And that's going to cost eight thousand?
Each.
Each, yeah, I got each.
So it's about ninety thousand if we flip.
Okay. Well, it's not like we don't have the money. That's all I wanted to add. Okay, who else want to speak on this item?
Mr. Mayor, Council, we need direction from the council. Do you want to, we need, we, the action from staff, as direct staff, on installation at temporary and also long-term? So we need some direction from you on what you guys want to do.
Okay, I thought we was waiting for the, uh, I know we wanted, needed some temporary, but I thought we was waiting on the, the report.
Yeah, and on the, we're waiting for the, the report on West one forty-seventh, but on the temporary, is the council wanting to provide staff direction on the temporary?
If, if I may summarize, uh, everything I, I, I explained, because there were, were a whole lot of different ideas there. The next steps, what we're missing to make decisions is a report on the west side, um, just to, to, and currently, we don't have, by the way, a design on a traffic circle. So the traffic circle portion could be done with that report, and that design we can use at any intersection. There is a portion of, uh, double width of the street on the east side, uh, right at, um, at Inglewood, where we could benefit from adding parking in that area, uh, at, uh, angle parking. That could also be studied at that time. So this report, if we choose to go in that, in that direction, will give us a design for speed humps, use them or not, but we could have that. We could also have the dots, we could also have the, uh, uh, runabout traffic circle design, and then I come back with that report, and we make a selection. Where could we implement them? It will come recommended from, from, on the report. Number two, we already have ideas, and thank you for, for pointing it out, uh, my report talks about, maybe it's, if council wishes, we could pick one of these four ideas of, of road diets, just to remove two of those extra lanes. When I drive one forty-seven, uh, maybe twice a week, three times a week, on the east side, there's never two cars using, right? Maybe we have too many lanes there, and that could, we already have designs here, ideas, we don't have a design, but we have ideas. That implementation could be quick, I don't have a cost estimate, but that implementation could be quick if we, um, move forward with striping, because it's remove the striping, re-stripe the street based on what we think is the best out of these four options. Personally, I like the option that doesn't give you a center, uh, travel lane. This is only two, like, the one you pointed out is, it's on the next page, it has one middle lane for your turf, left turns and right turns, but it adds to speeding. I would suggest one in each direction, bike lane, additional parking. But that is where we need direction of, would you like us to begin a, begin a design for the east side, uh, in, in a road diet atmosphere, and then move forward with the west side, also in preparing a report? And at some point, we come to council with both pieces. I personally think putting something in the immediate, uh, future temporarily, uh, it may be rushed until we have the other pieces. We could do either of these things, speed humps, we could put the barrels, that I think it's a good idea in the middle to, to tell people, hey, you need to stop and go around there as well, but I think we may be rushing something until we get all these pieces. Those are my, my two cents regarding what I would like to hear from you on, on which direction we move forward with.
Okay. Thank you for that perspective. Let's hear from, uh, Councilwoman Juarez.
Uh, my question is timelines, because for some, you know, of the residents, you know, some of these issues, they like to tell us it started a few years back. So what are some realistic timelines to where we can say that we can achieve some of these meaningful, um, implementations, such as road diets or, and whatnot?
Yes, the report can be done in three to four months. That's what I was, uh, told of one of the proposals. Again, I need to get more proposals, there's not enough at this time. But we're looking at that timeline puts us in, after summer, right? Four months from now, I will be coming back to council. If we begin one of the designs for the west side, um, it's also, the sign takes typically six months. I could be also at the same time back here, in four months, with some idea of how the new striping may look like. As a matter of fact, there is already, uh, a, a, a design in the report, but it's not quite a design to go and bid yet. It's just a, a pretty picture at this point. The benefit of doing that is reducing the speed limit, if we go with a, removing, reducing lanes.
Okay. Councilman, Televira.
So, uh, just a point of clarification, then, on the recommendation from the staff, number one, is that for both sides, or is that just for the east side of installing the temporary lighted traffic barrels?
That was for both sides.
For both sides?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, uh, just a comment on the road diet, uh, my preference is alternative one, if we, if we're going to use that report. But that, I guess, will have to be discussed, too. But I, I just think, you know, I want the, I want the public to know that we're listening and that we're not just trying to, you know, put it off. So if, if, if something temporary can, we can implement something temporary, like the barrels, to affect driving behavior, then we should do that. And, and then, uh, with, with the time that you, that you stipulate, that you say will take, then for us to, to do that, uh, that analysis for the west side, and look at what we have for, for the east side also.
Yeah.
But temporary barrels all the way through would be mine.
It has to come back to us, though, right, for the barrels, because there's going to be a cost associated with it.
That's correct, Mayor, Council. So Lucho will have to do a study, like you mentioned, and then it'll show us the design of the, the temporary barrels. I guess there's a specific design, we'll let Lucho add to it, and we'll have to bring it back to the council, because there's a cost, too.
Uh, I did add a cost on the, on, here, I believe, each intersection will be about a thousand dollars, uh, just in barrels and placing them there. What I didn't add is some signage, because it should be a sign directing the driver to take a ride and go around them. It's like the runabout, the, uh, traffic circle sign that, with an arrow. Uh, it, it adds five hundred dollars more maybe to the picture, so if we implement them at eleven locations or so, uh, we're looking at less than twenty thousand altogether, because about a thousand per location.
But, but to your, your question, that's in excess of the city manager's authorities?
Yes.
Yes, it will come back.
Okay, so then can we look at the barrels, can we look at the dots, just for sake, and then the circles and what cost estimates? Because this is a little incomplete for me to, to give direction on. And then, in the meantime, though, I would say go forward with the, the analysis portion of it. Is that what you're looking for direction to? Yeah, I would say definitely, uh, in terms of the road diets and...
And while we're at it, um, can you look into the reflective, um, strips?
For the stop signs, the...
Sure.
And if we're only going to do it on that street, we, we can just purchase it and go and install.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, if that's just consensus to move forward with the long-term analyses, obviously bring them back, uh, to council for approval of the contracts, but move, get those moving forward, and then to bring back the short-term options with more costing analysis for your approval, um, if that's consensus, you don't need to vote, sir.
Okay. Okay. All right, so move. All right, that was ten. Okay, so, ready. Let's welcome Councilwoman Quavis back to the daisies. Okay, we are on item eleven, consideration of termination of the Metro right-of-way maintenance Let's have the staff report.
Thank you. The, so I have a, a quick report, and then some guest, uh, speakers for us to answer some questions if, if we'd like. The, uh, the city of Longdale and the Ad, Ad Kisson, Topeka, and Santa Fe Railroad Company entered into an agreement in nineteen seventy-seven for the premises to be used, uh, as a site for landscaping from Artesia to one fifty-ninth street. Then, uh, in nineteen ninety-three, Metro bought this from what seems to be, the agreement says Santa Fe, but it seems to be, be, be N S, uh, B N S F. The, and there's a way to terminate this agreement, but, but from either side with a thirty-day written notice. And that was a request from council to bring, um, uh, a draft letter, uh, for your review and, and all that. Now, um, we, city performs maintenance of, of the row, of, uh, chain link fence fixing here and there when it gets broken by, by use and residents, I suppose. We also take care of the landscaping, uh, trim the trees, and pick up, uh, trash for the illegal dampings that occur, uh, closer to the, uh, to the south, uh, side. That is really the report, but, uh, today, there's two gentlemen from B S N F that came to visit us and answer some questions, if, if we have to. I have Dave Bradford and, and the other, Martinez. If you have any questions...
So, let me ask you this, before the representatives from, from B N S F approach the podium. Is this property owned by Metro or B N S F?
Mayor, Council, let me answer, because I know this is for detail. This property was purchased from Burlington Northern Santa Fe. They were merged back in the eighties, they were Santa Fe, and then the Burlington Northern, they merged, and, uh, they purchased it in the nineties for several millions of dollars. What, some of the concerns that Lucho brought up, I just want to reiterate, if we, if the council decides tonight to terminate this agree, this access, we will no longer have access to this area. We will have no access to graffiti removal, no access to picking up trash, no access to the homeless, no access to do outreach, we will be totally cut off, just like on the Caltrans right-of-way. So I just wanted to bring that up to your attention. If this gets terminated tonight, we will have no way to, right now, we're granted access by this license, that's granted through Burlington Northern Santa Fe through Metro. So if you guys terminate it tonight, we will no longer have access to that area.
So even though it's, it's Metro's property, but Santa Fe, um, B N S F still operates it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, they operate, as you know, and there's a main line that goes through there, they operate once a day or maybe twice, and Metro has plans, as, as everyone knows, to put their light rail, they, they are going to be sharing the line eventually, but the land was purchased wholly, based on our records, by Metro.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we was talking to the correct parties. Go ahead.
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, the Met, Burlington Northern has lots of, uh, interest there, because they, their line goes right through there.
Okay, but do they have the authority, though, to, to speak on behalf of Metro, though?
I mean, we do, I don't know about that, they just, uh, decided to sh- I don't know, they said they were going to come down and talk, but I don't, I don't know if they have authority to speak on behalf of Metro.
Okay. Gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you. Uh, Dave Bradford, I'm the division engineer for B N S F or Southern California. You're correct on everything you just stated, and we're, I can't speak to it, we don't have any background on that. I think that, uh, it was presented to our public relations department, to, somebody wanted to come speak from our company here. It was thought that it was going to be a couple of other issues, some of the stuff you guys have talked about already tonight. I think it overlaps, and I, I might be able to shed light to that, but to this point, I would say that neither of us can speak to it, other than give you, and you covered the history perfect.
If, if I may, there's a couple of, uh, right-of-way permits requests to, to add some, to do some maintenance at crossings, uh, on Manhattan, Manhattan Beach Boulevard and some other streets. So that's where we have also been communicating to, uh, I think we're waiting on plans to come in and, and obtain the permits. So that's the maintenance that you were referring to, and...
Now, who'd they get the permits from? I thought they get the permits from the Public Utilities Commission.
Uh, no, when they cross Manhattan Beach Boulevard, for example, is, it's a public works permit to do the work there.
Okay, got it.
When I have, uh, the money, or I get the project funds to do a road crossing, I work with the public, uh, the cities, the counties, to shut down the road, uh, we have to be in... We have to be in conjunction with you to just shut, we just don't shut down Manhattan Beach without getting your guys involved. That was something last year that I was working with. I had funding last year for Manhattan Beach, but unfortunately, we couldn't work out the permits in time to get it done, and I lost the funding. I know that, that I've heard since that the City of Longdale would like to get 170th, right? Yep. 170th, and I went and walked that today, and it, it does need some attention. Unfortunately, I don't have the funding to do it right now in the manner that, that I'm sure that most of your citizens are going to want, but I, I can and I will have somebody out there to basically do what, what you have when you have a pothole. We'll put that temporary mix on there, but I think that they're looking for a long-term fix, and I think that I can get on the plan for next year. Depending on if the city needs, if they have the funding and they want to do something, we've worked with many cities to kind of work together and partner up and, and get it done sooner in that way, and I could probably come up with something. The Manhattan Beach one has, all of my material is still sitting out there.
Yeah.
You'll see the, the panel that it's sitting closer to Inglewood, Inglewood Avenue. So all that material is there. I have the planks and everything. I'm going to have to do a little bit different stuff at 170th because it's a, a different type of crossing, but I, I think I could come up with it, work with the city planners to make it work, fit it in.
Okay. Ms., Ms. Cuevas.
Thank you for coming. In your opinion, would putting three rails towards the south end of the corridor, would that work with your, with your train? Or is that going to be something major that it's going to have to, you guys are going to take homes away so that we could put your train line, lane and then the two metros? Is that, I don't know if you could tell us about it, but in your opinion?
Mr. Mayor, we, unfortunately, this item under the Brown Act was agendized just for the maintenance license. So if we need to ask these questions, and I know they're important questions for the council and the public, I think it would be appropriate to ask the gentleman to come back for a more wide-ranging discussion.
Okay, well, I'm going to change my question then. We stopped maintenance. Who will take care of the right-of-way? Is it your team or is it going to be on Metro's side?
Metro Links, or, or, excuse me, LA Metro.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, but I would like, if possible, if they could come back so that they could answer the question about the additional tracks.
Yeah, we'll, we'll put them on, we'll get their information, Lucho, get their cards, and then we'll happily invite them back because I'm sure a lot of residents are interested in talking to these gentlemen.
And if we could put them towards the beginning so they don't have to...
Yeah, they were nice guys, they were, Mayor, Council.
Our entire meeting here.
For sure.
We'd definitely do that. Thank you, gentlemen. So that spoke to my, my question, if they were the appropriate party to speak with, which apparently they're, they're not. We don't need Metro to be here to have the discussion, though, but if we was going to invite anyone, it would be, I would have thought it would be in Metro. What is it? Any discussion on this side? And that was one of my questions I was going to ask Metro and the staff. Bernard, go ahead.
Yeah, I had a question if we know if there are any similar agreements with other cities, like even Redondo Beach for the maintenance and how that's handled? Or, or is this just specific to us and we took it on? Like, I'm just curious to have a little more info on that.
Mayor, Council, we'd have, we haven't looked at other cities. We could certainly bring this item back and reconsider it at a later date and do more research. We can certainly look at that. We did not look at other cities.
Yeah, that's a good question. Let's hear from the public real quick. Oh, let's hear from, sorry about that. Let's hear from Ms. Cuevas.
My, my opinion is I know that the residents would like for this maintenance contract to stop, but knowing Metro's record, they're not going to maintain that right-of-way. That's going to become a dump. I'm sorry to say it. Nobody's going to take that. The grass is going to grow as high as the fence. Graffiti is going to be there 24/7. We don't have access to it, so in my opinion, I don't want to cancel this contract.
Okay.
Sorry.
All right. So we know how you're going to...
Now you know how I'm, I'm going to go.
How you going to, how you going to vote? Let's hear from the public.
It might change if a resident comes in, you know.
Let's hear from the public. Yes, sir.
I am Ray Haller, homeowner in Southwest Longdale. First of all, I can tell you that, of course, we do not maintain the tracks, right? The BNSF, sadly, I'm glad they came, but they waited two and a half hours to speak and, and then they, so they maintain the tracks, BNSF does. I'm supremely confident it's not LA Metro. So that just conversation really didn't work, I don't think, the way that I, that I think it should have. Okay, but anyway, I'll get on with my speech. The staff letter did not contain two pieces of information which I think are relevant. First is the cost that Longdale pays to maintain the right-of-way, the row owned by LA Metro. I've heard it is about $65,000. That'd be about eight speed humps. But I would like somebody here to confirm or update that amount. Secondly, while the letter says that terminating Longdale's maintenance of the row owned by LA Metro may allow the row to fall into disrepair, that's my word, the letter did not say to whom such problems should be reported. Clearly, LA Metro will be the first party to, to contact, but in addition, I think it would be appropriate to notify the California Public Utilities Commission unless or any of you or the Longdale staff have a better contact recommendation. I support terminating Longdale's maintenance of the row owned by LA Metro. The money we would save could be used to repair the speed humps on Condon Avenue next to the row, which have grown from the tree roots from the row. So please terminate Longdale's maintenance of the row.
Thank you.
Nett Owens, Longdale resident. I, I, I'm concerned about the amount of money, which I'm assuming is our taxpayer money, that has been spent over the last decade, like, like 50 years, to maintain this row that we're now being kicked off of, that could be used for other things, like, oh, I don't know, lawyers or speed bumps or speed humps or whatever we're going to call them. And I'm concerned because once they start plowing through the row and they put up sound walls and whatever else they're talking about, it's, the row is probably going to look like what it looks like at the very last station at Redondo Beach. And I just went there today, sent an email picture to the mayor and to the city manager to show what Metro does, which is absolutely nothing. Just weeds and a, you know, a turned-over shopping cart, a homeless tent. I've seen more homeless tents there. We know that we have graffiti in our city. Now we're going to have even more graffiti canvas because we'll have a, a sound wall. I am a little frustrated because I know that they will not take care of the row. And either way we go, we can continue doing this until they say, okay, now we're going to, we have to kick you all off because now we're going to be doing demoing or whatever they're going to do. So I kind of support not spending that money there. I think we should put it towards an attorney to fight them or anything else, literally. I mean, we've spent all this money and now they're kicking us off the road. We can't even go walk on it when they're there. That, that's my opinion.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, everybody. My name's Chelsea. I live near the row. Recently, our row group came together. It included renters, families, longtime residents, and we're united in one message. Metro needs to take care of its own property. Since 1977, the City of Longdale has been maintaining this corridor, landscaping it, picking up trash, removing graffiti, all in behalf of a billion-dollar agency. That's nearly 50 years of our small, park-poor city using limited resources to keep Metro's land clean and safe. That's not equality, that's exploitation. At the bare minimum, I think that Metro should be reimbursing our city for this expense. Metro has plans to begin clearing the row in September, so now is the perfect time to end this one-sided agreement. Our community already shows up for this corridor. We walk it, we live next to it, we clean it up when Metro doesn't, and we've proven that we care. Now it's Metro's turn. Let's see if Metro actually values Longdale or if all their public outreach and promises are just talk. Ending this maintenance agreement is a challenge to Metro. If you want to use this land, then show up for it, take care of it, and prove you care about our community.
Good evening. I have mixed feelings about this. I mean, I, I agree with what they said about Metro taking advantage of us, but I, I've run along and walked along that row section for 27 years. I hadn't been there for a while, and I went there this morning. It was beautiful. People were, a lady was walking her dog. A guy was pushing his daughter on a swing. It was just, I, I didn't see any enforcement of Longdale residents not being there. It's the only parking area I really go to in Longdale, and it's, it's a beautiful section. If you say no and end the contract, it's going to be a mess. You're going to get, you're going to get a lot of calls about that. People go there from all, you know, for hundreds, from all the surrounding streets, and it'd be a shame and potentially it'd be a, a way of crime increasing in that area too, graffiti, the, no maintenance and that would be a shame. I don't know what the solution is, but if Metro is not going to say they're not going to take care of it, let's at least keep it like it is until Metro starts tearing it up. Thank you.
Mr. Kearney.
This is more of a question for the city manager or the city attorney. Can we get Metro here at our next meeting?
We can try and we can ask them to come down. See what they, Mayor, Council, we can see if they're willing to come down.
Because I'd like to have these questions directed to them. And if we do decide to, to, you know, the green space is yours, you take care of it. If the city does end up taking care of it, can we invoice Metro and will we get reimbursed? See, that's the question we did ask Metro.
We can ask them. We can certainly ask them. We can ask them when they come down and see if they're willing to. I'm of the opinion they'll tell us no, and they'll say no, they'll just take it back over, and I don't, I don't like to go against the residents. I hear what they're saying, but I do, I'm dealing with reality and I'm dealing with Caltrans, and they do, no offense to Caltrans, I got to be careful what I say here, but they do not maintain their right-aways, and we have a lot of homeless encampments on them. I get a lot of calls from the residents. I've been out there the last three days on 169th over by Caltrans, and we have a hard time getting them to maintain their areas. It's very challenging. The homeless know that our sheriff's department can't go out on the right-of-way unless there's a crime, and we have to have high patrol out there, and they know it's a separate agency, and even our staff do not step out on the Caltrans right-of-way. So this is something, so if we, if you guys decide to terminate, after we do more research, just, just be aware of that. That's it.
Let's hear from Councilman Suarez.
Yes, thank you. So I was one that requested because we heard some concerns, and I wanted to hear the overall picture of this. I know this topic has come up before. I'm not, I brought it more of a discussion. I wasn't sold on let's terminate it because I believe we have to look at all the factors regarding this and what the consequences could and couldn't be. My whole thing was looking into the money that we're spending. Are other agencies also having an agreement to maintain? Can we recoup some of this cost? Because that is a lot of money for us to be spending. Yes, we do have access for the residents with regards to that. I want to look at the costs and whether there's a way to get the money back because I do have concerns about crime increasing, like my colleagues mentioned, whether it's graffiti, whether it's encampments and whatnot, because, and I do agree with what one of the residents said is we will end up getting the calls and we're going to divert them to Metro. Metro's going to say, well, the city was maintaining it and they stopped. And so it, it creates a little bit of confusion, and I don't necessarily agree that it might be the best tactic, but I definitely want to look into recouping some of the money that we've been spending. That way we can use it maybe a little more effectively with outreach or whether it's additional buses, find, figuring out a way to get that money back, and then how can we use it in a manner in which we can maybe even get more outreach for those residents that live in the area or around the city to bring these issues to them? Because it sounds like Metro hasn't been doing the best in terms of outreach, so I'm looking at maybe getting some of those funds back. How can we do it strategically to where we can not necessarily create another mess, but use the funds a bit more effectively? I would like to see, though, more information and then too, obviously, if, if Metro would come, but I, I'm curious to see if there's a way to get the money reimbursed for what we're spending. Those are my thoughts.
Mr. City Attorney, what's your initial thoughts on getting the money back from, reimbursed?
Well, my initial thought is that it would take an amendment to the license, and I don't know how willing Metro would be to do that, but it's certainly worth the ask. There's nothing to stop you from asking, and in asking, you may wind up with a better idea of what their, their timing and their plans are.
I just want to tell the residents, I do hear you. I understand where you're coming from, but it's also part of the green space that we could walk on right now. I wouldn't want our kids to see a dumpster on their backyard. It's not fair to the children. They need that green space. I know that they, we have restrictions, and my understanding it's only during the time that they're out there, but besides that, we have access to that green space whenever Metro's not doing whatever they do out there. So I will consider what you said, but at the same time, it's not fair to the children to see a dumpster, like graffiti, crime on their backyard.
Suarez.
Oh, yeah, I had another question that I forgot to ask with regards to them starting to clear it out as of September. That would require them to give a notice by...
Sixty days?
August 1st? Depending on when would that be? So...
Yeah, that's correct. We'd have to look into it. I don't know anything about them clearing out any...
What kind of notice?
Thirty days, right?
No, I mean, what kind of notice?
It, it would be a notice that they were going to take action to cancel this license because they would no longer be giving the city the ability to do the cleanup.
Okay, thirty days.
So that would be three more months that we would be maintaining it. That was just my question that I had is if that were the case. Yeah, I'm sorry, I, I, I thought about this, and, and for me, it's just, the crime part is like the big issue for me and what it might do to that area. And so I, I wouldn't, as it stands now, I wouldn't be in favor of terminating the agreement.
Mr. Pat Kearney.
So can we ask the Metro to be here at our next meeting and see if, if they show up, and if they do, get the answers from then and decide what we do then? Can we also, I don't know what the maintenance is, is it every week, every two weeks there? Lucho? Is maintenance every weekend on the row? Is it every two weeks as a once a month?
It is, landscaping maintenance is, is weekly, annually tree trimming, and the rest is as needed when we're called. and the rest is as needed when we're called to clean up something.
So can we look at Mariposa to see if we can do it every two weeks instead of every week?
We could definitely look into that.
I know our contract's up with them soon, I believe, isn't it?
Yes.
June or something, maybe June?
June, I, yes. I can, I can definitely ask.
Keep some of the money by saving, only doing it twice, twice a month, every, every week? Until we get an answer from Metro, but like I, I don't think Metro ever show up, because I think they'll probably get lynched. That's my personal opinion, of course. All right, thank you.
Okay, so is it the, the direction of this body to invite Metro to the next meeting? And then we can pose the same questions to Metro before we make a decision?
If that's what I'm hearing from the council, that's the direction. We can bring it back in the next available meeting when we, Metro can show up, and if, and then bring it back and agendize it for the council for, ask them questions and make a determination.
And can I ask that we include any info on other agreements that they may have with other municipalities or agencies? And what their contracts look like?
Yeah, that's a great idea. We'll ask Metro if they have any other ones, and we'll ask the surrounding cities that have the rail going through. That's definitely, yeah, we can bring that forward.
Well, are we gonna ask the surrounding cities before? I know you just said that, but I'm repeating it.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we would, we'd do more research, get that information, so we wouldn't put it, we'll try to put it on the next meeting, but I don't know availability of Metro, and then the research for that. We'll definitely get it on as soon as we can.
All right. Okay, so that would be the order. Okay, item 12, quarterly investment report for the quarter ending March 31st, 2025.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. So this is the fiscal year Q3 cash and investment report for the quarter ended March 31st, 2025. As of 3/31, the city had total investments of, total cash and investment of $60,823,970, plus another $2,038,680 in cash with fiscal agent held in trust for the Longdale RDA tax allocation bond, $1,050 in petty cash, and $760,486 in two retirement pares accounts. Just a little bit about the state of the economy and our holdings. Federal Reserve, you know, lately, they've held interest rates steady. There have been no changes so far this year. Their last rate cut was last year. So as a result, LEAF has actually crept up a little bit from 4.22, looking at it last March, to this March, it's at 4.313. The next Fed meeting is scheduled to be on May 7. Currently, you know, they do a poll of economists, there's really, they're not expecting a rate cut this time around. Looking forward for, through the end of the year, they're expecting a total rate cut of 1% between now and then in the year. That's, you know, based off of consensus with the polls they do and everything. So about a 1% rate cut between now and the end of the year. For the quarter ended March 31st, the city remained very liquid with 74.93% of cash in LEAF and checking, which is our on-demand. The remaining 7.09% is in short-term investments, 8.13 in midterm investments, and 9.86 in long-term. We are looking to add more and more to long-term to lock in favorable rates that we can get right now for longer periods of time instead of just a short one to three years. Overall, it's working out well. You know, as we look, we look at what opportunities are out there and the best for the city, keeping in mind that, you know, the ultimate goal is safety and liquidity of the city's funds. So overall, everything's moving smoothly. I know there's been a lot of volatility in the markets recently. That has not affected us just because the way we do our investments. I'm not trading those investments, I hold them through maturity. And when you hold through maturity, you get your full principal back. So we're not really affected by those, plus we don't, we don't invest in equities as well. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you for that report. Let's hear from Pat Kearney.
All right. Do you find our sales tax are down because of the increase on our sales tax? From the county putting that 25% onto it? So we're paying 10.50 right now, correct?
Yes.
I think Redondo's 9.50. Do you see anything, sales tax going down? Because why pay 10, 10.5 here, you go to Redondo, pay 9.5?
I don't, no. I mean, just off, I don't really know, but I would say no, not because of that. Overall, if there is a decrease, it's because of the economy, but there, I mean, there's been a slight decrease, but I wouldn't say it's because our rates are higher than somebody else's.
Thank you. Okay, so receiving and file? Oh, yeah, receiving and file.
Okay, without objection, we're receiving and filing support unless there's any additional questions. Okay. Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Mr. Treasurer, I should say. I was looking at you.
I don't have any questions. He answered everything on my questions.
Okay, let's go to 13, item 13.
Good evening, Jason Winter, Community Services Director. This item is a request to approve an agreement for the purchase installation of shade covers at Charles B. Hopper Park. As you know, there are three shade cover structures there, two of them share posts. One of the shade covers is still up, one of them has a large cut in it, the other one has been removed. This project would include the removal and destruction of the two that are still there, and then the installation of three new shade covers. With your approval, it'll take about six to eight weeks for them to order the materials and schedule delivery. We would be shutting down a portion of the park just for about half a day while they installed the new covers, and then hopefully, they'd be up in time for the hot months of summer. I'm here to answer any questions if you have them.
Cuevis.
Were these covers vandalized or just tear and wear? Do you have an idea?
I have heard that because of their location with the picnic tables, that people have been able to reach up and potentially vandalize them, but I don't have like a solid source on that.
And what's the life term for these? So I mean, are they like a five-year life, or do you know?
I thought the warranty was 10 years, but I can check.
No, it's okay.
Yeah, I think they've, they're just about towards the end of their life, which is why I think it's good to replace even the one that's up there whole. While we're mobilizing a crew, we'll get them all done.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Okay. So what is the pleasure of this body concerning this?
I'll go with stock recommendation to purchase the three USA shade amount. $24,985, 13. We need those some money, so, yeah, I'll go with that.
Motion's been made by Kearney that we accept that recommendation.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Cuevis. Is there any discussion on the motion? Would the council please vote? I was about to, I was looking for the button.
For item number 13, the motion passes unanimously.
Okay, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Jason has an announcement for the council and the community.
Go next.
Good evening. I hope you remember me. I was here just a minute ago.
Yeah, yeah.
This weekend, the Saturday on April 26th, we have the big annual Youth Day Parade. The parade will begin at 10:00 a.m. on Manhattan Beach Boulevard, just east or just west of Prairie. So we do invite all members of the public to come out and watch the celebration of our youth in the annual Youth Day Parade. We will have a video, videographer that is recording everything. I know many of you will be involved in the parade, so we look forward to seeing you bright and early on Saturday morning to get lined up for the parade. We also have, as hosted by the Longdale Elementary School District, an extravaganza that's here in the Civic Center immediately following the parade. So stop by, there'll be some food, some snacks, a lot of vendor booths, a whole lot of interactive, you know, things for the community to do. We're really excited about this year's Youth Day Parade and Spring Extravaganza. Any questions?
Nope. Doing a fine job.
Thank you.
No, go next, huh?
Okay. Items from city council members. Item 14, reduction in site plan review deposit.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council. The item is a reduction in site plan review deposit. A site plan is in the most common application within the community development department. Residents who wants to make any type of improvements to their home or correct code enforcement cases, submit a site plan, a floor plan, and an elevation for staff to review. And this is the initial steps that the department takes in order to issue permits. So right now, the fee is about $2,500 deposit, and we're, mayor talked to the city manager and asked that we reduce the fee to about $1,600. But we're not reducing a fee. We're only asking for the initial deposit to be $1,600, which in our analysis would cover the most common site plan reviews. There's not an, there is no change in the hourly rate, just the deposits, and we average about 120 applications per year. Staff is available to answer any questions, but the SPR is one of our most basic applications.
Okay. Is it? Oh. How do I get back? Okay, Cuevis.
There it is, right there.
We currently are asking for a $2,500 deposit. How much does a typical person get back? Do we get like 500 back, 600 back? How much are we refunding at the end of the project?
At the end of the project, if, about 900. So we did look at the numbers, and staff did confirm that it was about $900 refund.
Mayor and council, I can add to that. So after looking into working with accounting, getting on Haron and his staff and Peter's staff, we discovered that although the fee study showed the 2,500, we actually found the average was about 1,600 bucks. So we could do it cheap, the hourly rate's the same, like Peter mentioned. We're lowering the deposit as the, you know, so if they have to re-up, if they don't get their plans in correctly, or there's more site plans submitted, then they would have to re-up on the deposit. But on average, the majority of them were getting about $900 back, and I've been on staff to get the refunds back to the residents. So that's how we came up with that number, and we're hoping to hold that there, and we think it'd be a wonderful thing to do to help, help the community out and the residents. The mayor had heard my conversation and said, why don't you guys look in and see if this is doable? So that's where we're at.
Okay, let's hear from Suarez.
Yeah, so how would you say, if I remember the last time we had a report regarding planning department, site plans from a while, it was, it was before your time. But if I remember correctly, a lot of the time spent when reviewing them was looking up the Google Maps, looking at the different time periods, looking at permits, kind of the overall part of it? Like what percentage, if you were to kind of explain what goes into reviewing a site plan, what is most of the time spent on in terms of staff?
So part of a site plan, two components is required, an existing site plan and a proposed site plan. So most of the time, residents would provide us what they want to do, but they don't actually show us what's on their property right now. So we would do record search of a lot of our records, you know, I've seen it go back to 1940s to current, so we'll compare. They're not providing us an analysis of what's there right now. They're only showing us proposed. So this proposed could show a open patio cover, but there's no permits for it. So we would analyze it, and part of our SPR corrections legalized this existing patio cover. And so those are the times we spend to base, the more information that you provide to us, the less research we have to do. And the reason, because they're not providing enough data for us, we have to search for it and then justify, this is our decision, this is our, all of our records. Record indicates that this patio cover doesn't have a permit, and we're asking you to legalize it, so.
Okay, because what I'm trying to figure out if, how can we give residents the tools so that they can eliminate even more costs? You know, I once had someone who had a duplex, and someone called in one of the units. They had to go through the process, and during that process, they had site plans drawn. So they had to go research, spend, I think at the time it was 5,000 for an architect to design it. And what, there were some things that could have been eliminated, such as when they drew the plans, they only did the unit that had the violation. Well, then planning told them, no, you have to get the whole lot, both units on the site plan. So it's just like little things like that, that then that person had to go spend even more money to get their plans drawn, you know, revised and whatnot. So it's like, how do we, I'm trying to figure out, too, I think it's great that we're lowering the amount, but how do we also make it a little bit easier where, hey, you know, here's a checklist of items that you can bring, showing, you know, your permits, showing any county records? Because from what I understand, too, sometimes we don't have all the records, and those residents could go to the county and get those. How do we eliminate some of the back and forth? Are there other things that we could do other than just reducing the amount of the initial deposit, but also things that could eliminate staff time? That would essentially eliminate even the 16, or lower even the 1,600 that they're paying?
One of the things is, at the counter, we do talk to a lot of residents contractors. So one of the areas for improvement, and during Sean's time as a director, he did create a chart. It's like two pages where it talks about the existing development standards. So one thing in the site plan review is, as long as you don't exceed 50% of your existing square footage, you're okay, it's easier for you. But if you exceed 50%, you have to provide two more parking spaces, landscaping, private open space, open, regular landscaping. So if the residents and designer are more educated upfront that as long as you don't exceed 50% of your gross square footage of your home, you're gonna be okay. You're considered legal non-conforming. And so once you exceed a threshold, it's more work for us to analyze areas and alternatives and discussions with the applicant and architect.
Okay, and then the other thing is that, another situation that popped up with that specific one is that the resident was thinking maybe they could legalize it. Turns out they couldn't, then they had to get a demo permit, and for me, it seems a little excessive to, if, are there ways to know upfront, like that's more than likely, like do we give that? Like that's more than likely not going to be able to pass? I know you can't say definitively, you know, after, you know, without reviewing everything, but are there ways to cut, you know, like that's probably not gonna pass? Recommendation would probably be to get a demo permit for it, or I don't know what the legal implications are, but it's just going through all of that just to demo it seems like a lot of money.
So we do, planning does have new electronic stamps. So when we're, we're trying to expedite that, the time we spend on SPRs. And so we have, if something is incomplete, we'll deem it corrections with an incomplete submitted, and we'll ask for more data from them, everything, a scope of work, existing site plan, existing floor plans, just so, so that they provide us the data that we spend less time on it. So we do have an incomplete submitted. We also have denied with correction so that they're aware of the actions we take, that it was denied, but they, they can correct it. And so once they do correct it, we would approve it. So our actions are gonna be a lot quicker now, because we may deem it incomplete for kind of what you're mentioning. If, if we're looking for a demo in terms of an interior wall within a garage, and that's the scope of work, that should be fairly simple, where we could just approve it with conditions, and the scope of work is clearly defined, that it's only for a demo of the interior garage.
Okay, maybe we need to revisit this topic. Can we agendize it to look at processes? Because I've had residents who, you know, they've even told me, and some of them... and some of them I know for a fact, have had their plans approved. And then all of a sudden, oh, no, no, we forgot this piece of information. It's rejected, and then no, it's approved. So I think we need to look at, you know, how we're processing, not necessarily during your time. But I think we need to take a look at how we're processing and making sure that, you know, we're making it as seamless as possible. But yeah, in terms of the site plan, I'm okay with reducing it.
Okay. If there's no further discussion, I'll make a motion.
I'll second that motion.
E-motion? Okay, the motion has been made by Pullman Miles and seconded by Kearney, um, that we...
Direct staff to lower the site plan.
Yeah, direct staff, yeah. There, there you go. What's, any discussion on the motion? Okay, will the council please vote?
Forward, item number fourteen, the motion passes unanimously.
Well, moving along with the agenda, we're going to, uh, number fifteen, report of attendance of meetings. We'll start the floor in with Councilman Talavera.
Okay, um, on last Saturday, the twelfth, I was at the Easter egg hunt at Jane Addams Park. Saw a lot of smiling faces. I was just amazed of all the number of Easter eggs that, uh, that the city provided for, for the youngsters. I mean, there were kids that had small bags, but even kids that had took shopping bags, they were full. So there was a lot of smiling faces, and I was able to do the countdown for the ten to twelve-year-olds race. So, um, it was good to be there and had a lot of fun. And then on the sixteenth, I had lunch with seniors again and, uh, met a couple from Ecuador. And I'm glad to, I'm glad to see that, you know, we're not exclusive. Because as I've been talking to them, and I said, well, how long have you lived in Landale? They said, oh, I live in Hawthorne. So, okay, great. You know, and I think they, I think the next thing they want to tell me is, or they think that I'm going to ask is, well, what are you doing here? But I, but I say, great, you know? So they're there and, and they're volunteering, some are volunteering. And I'm just glad that we offer services, uh, through our community department that, um, you know, they, everyone's taking advantage of it. So I, I think it's great. And I'm really looking forward to Saturday for being in the parade. That's all I got.
Thank you. Well, moving on to Councilwoman Suarez.
Yes, um, I know I had more than one, but the only one I can remember was the Contract Cities meeting I had last week on Wednesday. The outgoing President Jennifer Perez from Norwalk, we were able to present her with a plaque. And yeah, and I think one of the updates was that the executive directors can be sitting on a task force regarding Measure G that passed that expands the board. So, um, that'll be some good advocacy in terms of, um, you know, local cities and their input. And then I did want to look into, um, something that I want to, uh, ask to be brought forward is customer service and training with staff. I get complaints here and there, you know, about, um, the way that sometimes certain, uh, not every department, but obviously some situations get a little bit, um, tricky to navigate depending on the issues that are brought up. So maybe just some training around it and best approaches and whatnot. So I'd like to agendize that. And the other thing I wanted to bring up is, last year, we talked about Lemonade Day. And I know a lot of cities are doing that. I know we didn't budget for it, but I know there was consensus about looking at it. So perhaps, um, we can bring it forward. I can also mention it during our budget subcommittee, that's supposed to happen on Wednesday, but just wanted to put that one out there. And then, um, the other thing was, um, if we had an update regarding, residents' ability to rate their experience when it comes to using services here.
Uh, Peter, I'll, Peter answered where we're at with that.
Could I hear the question again?
Yes, I think, I, you know, and I'm trying to remember. We brought up how people can give input as to their experience dealing with, um, I think it was through the, I think it was through the planning process and whatnot, and how they...
So I did search with the county. The county, um, right now has a similar service where their link, their email has a link where you can provide a summary of the customer service. I did look at it, and I'm currently in contact with one of their, um, I guess, lead IT guys to see what they're doing in terms of that specific survey. And it, I guess the survey can go to whoever, it can go to Beckham, it can go somewhere else. But we're, we're looking into, um, that part of the, this customer service.
Awesome, okay, thank you. And with that, I'll pass it along.
Ms. Quavis.
All right. I attended the Landale Annual Egg Hunt at William Green. Thank you, Jason, staff, and volunteers. It was a great event. The, I, the kids, I had so much fun, and those eggs were, I think there were too many eggs. But it's okay, it's okay. They were all happy, so that's a good thing. The only comment I got, I received were that since we have two parks, some parents have tiny ones and older ones. So Grandma or Dad had to go to one park with the oldest one and another park with the little one. I don't know if it's possible to combine both of them and make a one, one event, in one place, in one park. So it's something that we could look at maybe for next year. But besides that, everybody loved it. They loved that gold egg. That's the first thing they were looking for. But then, I don't know who got them, but somehow they disappeared right away. But thank you very much for putting that together. I also attended that, uh, the same day, on the twelfth, the, uh, Second Annual Wilson Williams Theater Showcase at Hawthorne, um, High School. It was an event that showcased the talent of Sentinel Valley Union High School Theater students. Great event. I recommend it for everyone to attend next year when they're, they're going to do their third annual. These kids are high school kids, but they, they, they're actors. They're our future actors and actresses. It was a well-put-together event. I stopped that same day, on the twelfth, I stopped at the library. Great event also. I, it would be fun if the city could participate with the library on that event and work, work as a, a community. Maybe Beautification could have a booth out there and, and showcase what we have. But it was well-attended. Then, um, on four sixteen, I attended the Contract Cities Board of Directors Meeting. It was fun. It was cold, but it was a, a fun event. And, uh, like, uh, Councilmember Suarez said, we presented the outgoing precedent with, uh, a plaque of recognition. One last thing is, do we still have funds for the, um, for those, um, residents that are purchasing from local vendors to get reimbursed? Is, is that still going on?
Mayor, Council, have Ron answer that?
Yeah, it's still going on, and we do have funds, yes.
Okay, so residents, please shop in Landale. If you need home improvement, go to the, any of our Landale businesses. They need your help right now in purchasing. So, and then bring your receipt to Haron. That's it.
Okay. On the ninth of April, I attended Library Trust Oversight Commission, where that's where we oversight the sheriffs and accidents and whatever. There was no money paid out. I also attended Jane Addams Easter Egg Hunt, uh, with Councilman Talavera, and the mayor was there. And it was a great event. The reason why we split the two, in case you guys didn't realize it, is a parking issue over Jane Addams, I mean, William Green, was limited. We split this a couple of years ago, I think three or four years ago. You have more control of the children, the age groups, if you split them. I was one that asked to split them, and I think it works great. I also attended on the twelfth, uh, Landale Library Fest, which was great. Like I said, we almost had Robert dressed up in flowers, and he looked beautiful. And then on the sixteenth, I attended the Neighborhood Watch Meeting, which was well. I think we had at least twenty people there. A lot of questions asked. And then I have a question, I don't know, Robert, do you mind knowing more about this? SB two twenty. Do you know what that is? How about you?
Not by number?
No, not by the number.
Okay, well, I'll talk to you about SB twenty, two twenty. And I agree with Bernarditt. I see Metro wants to expand their board, and it's all Metro people that want to go join that board. There's nobody outside, it's all Metro people want to expand that board. And with that, I'll pass it on. The Metro Board wants to add new members. And it's all Metro people that want to be, um, going to be on that board. So there's no outsiders, there's no like, uh, uh, Jason, or Juan be on the board. It's all Metro people. So I think, um, something's not too kosher there. And I pass it on to you.
Uh, I don't, I don't know about that. Because it's not like that now, is where you, you have to be appointed by somebody.
Yeah.
Not some, some, not as someone, but some entity.
Somebody on the board.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, I attended the, um, the sanitation district meeting and, um, Easter egg hunt at, um, both William Green's and Jane Addams. Also attended Library Fest and City Selection Committee, uh, meeting. And that's all I have to report. All right. We have a couple of closed sessions. Matter of fact, um, two, to be exact. Mr. City Attorney, can you read the, the, um, provision for which we'll go under?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, we'll be, um, uh, meeting with the labor negotiator under Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six regarding negotiations with the bargaining unit. We'll also be going in under five four nine five six point nine D one to discuss existing litigation with the name of the case printed on the agenda for anyone who wants to see. Thank you.
...
Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council was briefed by the labor negotiator. No reportable action was taken. The city council was briefed on the existing litigation. The council gave direction to settle on certain defined terms if those terms were able to be reached. If those terms are reached, then a settlement agreement will come back for council approval at a later date. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the city council will be held at 6:30 PM on Monday, May 5, 2025, in these here chambers. It is now 10:36. We are adjourned.
Okay, we have returned from closed session. I'm going to ask the city attorney to give the report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The city council was briefed by the labor negotiator. No reportable action was taken.